Good evening, I'm Brendan Zabricki, Town Administrator. And I'm gonna mention that this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. At this time, I would like to recommend that the Board of Selectmen consider the reorganization of the Board with respect to Chairman and Clerk of the Board. And so I will leave the discussion up to you to arrive at a chair. Thank you.
I'll nominate Al Lang Harrow as the new Chair.
Second.
Agree.
You're accepting?
So call the vote.
And so now, call to vote.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? Sorry.
Aye.
And for the Secretary position?
Which is the clerk.
I'm fine to do that if people want me in it.
I nominate Peter. Do I have to nominate you?
Yeah.
Peter to be the Secretary?
Clerk.
I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair.
Okay. I'm gonna be really bad at this, I'm telling you that right now. Okay, so to start, so we've done this, and so now we're gonna talk about, we're gonna go right into the 6:15, or do we wanna go into something else?
No, you can do other business perhaps in between.
Okay, so, BZ, do we wanna do your reports or other business? So other business is, I make a motion to approve-
You would wanna entertain a motion.
I entertain a motion to approve the weekly warrant in the amount of $1,787.49.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Approve the minutes for the Selectmen's May 5th, 2025, open meeting.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Any would abstain on that?
Approve the fiscal year 2026 Police and Fire Accident Insurance Policy?
So moved.
Second, sorry.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consider the appointment of a new Board Member of the Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay, so this item is on the agenda because the Chair, the outgoing Chair of the Selectmen was the Affordable Housing Trust representative from the Board of Selectmen. The bylaw is very specific, and in some cases, it could be a current or former member of the Board, but with respect to the Selectmen, it has to be a current member of the Board. So this is a point for the Board to discuss whether someone has interest in taking that over. You don't necessarily have to get on the Affordable Housing Trust and be the Chairman. That was what the outgoing person was. You could just be a member, and then the Affordable Housing Trust could choose a new Chairman at some future meeting.
So, Annie, I don't know if you wanna entertain doing this. I kinda thinking maybe I would, only because I don't know enough about it and would wanna gain some knowledge.
I'm happy to see that, too.
So I nominate myself as the Affordable Housing Trust.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And are we going to do this, Amy Connors?
No, this can be tabled. The confusion that was present last week has been cleared up.
Is it tabled or dismissed, or whatever?
Tabled, I mean, it's not gonna come back indefinitely postponed. It's been cleared up.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the, consider whether the current civilian Harbor Master will continue in this role as of July 1st, 2025, versus a Chief of Police becoming the Harbor Master, and the current civilian Harbor Master becoming the Deputy Harbor Master. So I know we discussed this in the past, and either of you have any comments or thoughts?
Well, you know, I think, as I said when we discussed it before, one of the key components of the hiring of the new chief was that they have the skills, desire to be the Harbor Master. I mean, that's how it had been prior to the last chief that did not have the skills, and so that's why we hired an outside Harbor Master, but I think that's the way we wanna go, is the chief being the Harbor Master.
And to follow up on that, I think we also talked about, you know, some oversight and enforcement, and coming, you know, with the Police Department involved in it, we get both of those. Chief Shamshak, is there anything you wanted to add to that?
And while he's coming up, I would mention as well, I think the Board was contemplating, perhaps as of July 1st, so that the Harbor Master's current appointment runs out on June 30, and it's not truncating his appointment. Sorry, go ahead, Chief.
No, nothing else to add.
Nothing to add.
I have some questions. So, I guess I just wanna have a better understanding of why the change. It seems to be a structural change, not a performance change, and you're changing somebody's title, so that's the thing that I'm uncomfortable with. So I wonder if someone wants to speak to kind of-
Sure, so I can add to that as far as, when you look at the job description for a Harbor Master and a Deputy Harbor Master, the job descriptions are exactly the same. The difference is that there are pros and cons to having a Chief of Police as far as the Harbor Master. One is, one of the downsides that I saw is whether or not they have time to get certified, and whether or not they have time to oversee another area. In previous meetings, we've talked about it, and it was said that, yes, he's willing to take on this role. So again, it goes back to, prior chief had it, and now we're just going back to what it was with prior chiefs.
And he was willing to take it on as-
During-
Part of the hiring process.
Okay, I'll take a vote. And so what do I do?
So, the motion could be, you could entertain a motion, if this is the Board's pleasure, to have the Harbor Master, I'm sorry, the Chief of Police become the Harbor Master as of July 1, 2025, with the current civilian Harbor Master becoming a civilian Deputy Harbor Master, and there's no change in the rate of pay also as of July 1. So you could entertain that motion, someone could move it second, and then a vote.
I entertain a motion for-
You can just say, as I laid out, and you don't have to repeat.
As BZ has laid out.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna abstain on this one.
What happens if he chooses not to take on that role, the civilian Harbor Master?
The Deputy Harbor Master? Then somebody else would have to be chosen.
Okay.
But he certainly has that option.
Okay.
Now, I understand, the next item on the agenda is regarding the Pavilion-
It's going to be tabled.
Tabled, because-
Yep, they no longer are seeking it.
And, let's see.
I did have one item I wanted to mention, and I just was told about this today, and it's time-sensitive. There are three dead trees on a town parcel on Gregory Island Road. Gregory Island Road itself is a private way, but the town has parcels off of the way. And these three dead trees are overhanging someone else's property, we are the property owner. The tree warden, who is the Superintendent of Public Works, brought this to my attention. He does have the money in his budget, and he's currently working with a tree contractor to do the spring cleanup. And so, my recommendation is that the Board authorize the tree warden, Superintendent of Public Works, to take these trees down. He's coming to us, of course, because you actually manage the town parcel in question.
So the trees are actually on the town?
Yeah, on the town parcel, not in the private right-of-way, and leaning over someone's private property. It is a vacant parcel, small vacant parcel that the town owns.
Yep.
Did you take a look at it, or?
Yes, he showed me the pictures, and he recommends that they be taken down because they're gonna fall down, and they may hit personal property on the other side.
And so do we, the Board have to vote to say we give permission to the-
That's what I would recommend, because you're the manager of that property.
Okay, so, the Board recommends, I make a motion for the Board to recommend that the DPW handle the three dead trees on Gregory Island Road that are on town parcels?
So moved.
Second, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
Do we not have, is there a tree, you know, sometimes towns have like a very active tree group that's-
I don't, I don't know of any.
You don't have, okay.
Like an Arbor Day Foundation, or that type of thing.
I know that Manchester has a very active tree group.
We don't, we don't.
Good.
It's usually case by case, sometimes people take an interest in a certain tree or parcel.
On a particular road, or whatever.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, I just wanted to check.
So Annie, I'm sorry, you said you're gonna abstain?
No, no, no.
Oh. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I just want the tree people on my front lawn.
You could go into appointments.
Okay.
So you could move that the Board vote-
Yeah, move that the Board vote to approve the appointments on Pages 2 and 3, and these are, do I need to go through all of them?
You do not, you say as listed.
As listed on Pages 2 and 3.
So moved.
Second, can I make a suggested edit, that we take the Strategic Planning Committee off? That committee hasn't met since 2022, and I don't think that these folks actually, I don't know how many of them were contacted, but I would, I would suggest we pause on that one.
You certainly can, there's nothing pressing before them. You're suggesting that we reach out, and at the next meeting, perhaps update you on who's still willing?
And I think maybe we wanna think about, you know, who from what? I mean, it used to be like, specific people from specific committees. Who's the best person to talk about planning? I just-
Well, isn't Strategic- Can I, excuse me, the process is that, at the beginning of May, a letter is sent to all the Chairman of all the committees with a list of people that are on their committees with their expiration dates, and asking if those people are willing to be reappointed or still be on the committee. And the Chairman responded, that's why it's on this agenda, just so you know the process.
So, in his mind, these people wanna be on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna leave it as is.
So the motion is as listed on the agenda.
Can we take it off, and then do it separately? And I'll oppose it that way, if I can approve everything else.
I don't see a reason. I'm getting the sense that you're saying that it's, certain departments should be on it, and I'm not so, a strategic plan is a volunteer board that wants to help with the strategic plan of the town.
Well, it is true, though, that when it was first put together, different boards and committees were contributory to it, so that there was a balance of different viewpoints throughout the town. Now, some of these people, of course, are still representing those other viewpoints, they're still in the positions they were for a while, but it's really, right, so right now, there's a motion on the table to approve these appointments as listed. Annie, you're making a motion for an amendment that it, that at this point, you vote on everything else except that.
Yeah.
So if you make that, if you move that amendment, someone would have to second it, and then you could vote on the amendment.
Great, do you need me to write it?
No, no, no.
Thank God. Okay, so, yes, that's what I'd like to amend.
Okay, and I'll second.
All those in favor?
Of the amendment.
Of the amendment?
Aye.
Okay, so it carries.
It carries.
So now, the vote was for everything except the Strategic Planning Committee. Annie, you mentioned you might wanna bring it up again.
Yeah.
So now we're voting on all but the Strategic Planning Committee?
So, all those in favor of all of the appointments with taking out the strategic planning? All those in favor?
So moved.
Aye.
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 Okay. Does the Board, so based on the fact there was a majority vote on the amendment, I assume that the Board wants to take up the Strategic Planning Committee after I make new contact with the people individually. Is that right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a, it has long-range impacts on the town, so I think that, you know, I didn't realize that I hadn't met in three years, or whatever, so, yeah, it might be worth-
All right, I'll reach out-
Investigating further.
I'll reach out to each of them, and have information at the next meeting.
Who's the Chair now?
It's been so long, I don't actually-
I resigned.
You were the Chair.
Yeah, and I resigned.
Yeah, so I think it kinda was left that way.
Yeah, and I know that some of these folks didn't necessarily wanna, I think there were some folks who didn't wanna be on it.
And one side note on this, and I know you're gonna move on now to the 6:15 appointment. There is, you saw, one of the committees was the Local Emergency Planning Committee. That committee is usually attended by the Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Alva, it only meets as necessary, and it's very infrequent. May we put your name on the next agenda to put you on that committee?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Okay, so now it is 6:15, and this is in regards to the conductor lottery for 10 special non-resident boat launching and parking permits. Now, before we go and do a thing, can I just ask a couple of questions? So would we be giving a placard to go into the vehicles?
Yes, we will put together an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven placard. It will talk about the restrictions of what the placard really is, and what you can do and what you can't do with it. It will list a single license plate number for one tow vehicle, and a single license plate number for one trailer.
Okay, great, so it is gonna be both?
Yes, and I will, I will sign it in colored ink, and the Police Department will have the entire roster, so if someone puts the placard in the wrong thing, they know.
And then the other question-
Do we care if it's a different trailer?
I think you do.
I mean, if-
Because that's how you register the boat.
Somebody borrows another, a friend's boat, because his is in the shop, or something.
That's how we advertised it.
Yeah, okay.
Because there'd be one and one.
Okay.
And we got plenty of takers.
Yeah, how many did we get?
We got a total of 13, but one of them was from the same address. And I said, well, are we talking about two votes, two boats and two vehicles? They said, no, just two entries. So they understand that, and there's only one entry in from that address. So what's gonna happen here is that there's a total of 12, you're gonna draw 10, and two people will not get it.
And then the other question I wanted to ask you, as far as, so if they're gonna be having this for the summer, does that mean we verify that the excise tax is paid here, or no?
No, not if they're, not from town. They don't, they wouldn't pay excise tax here.
Well, it says where, okay, it's where it's housing, so it would be still at home. Never mind. Thank you. So how are we doing this?
Bear with me. What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna count out, I'm gonna read the names and count them out, okay? Chris Goodrich, Jacob Greco, Michaela Campbell, that's three. Andrew Vasallo, Aiden Nissel, Thomas Dukas, that's six. Eddie Contilli, Nick Lorenzano, Andrew Browning, that's nine. Mark Pitkin and Samantha Quinn, that's 11, I wanna make sure nothing's stuck together. And I'm gonna count these, it could be that it was 12 going to 11. Greco, Nissel, second Nissel, so that's just two. Third is Lorenzano. Fourth, Campbell. Fifth, Browning. Sixth, Pitkin. Seventh, Vasallo. Eighth, Dukas. Ninth, Contilli. Tenth, Goodrich. Oh, the one on the top, Quinn.
So that's 11?
Yes.
12 with the dollar.
Right, that's 11, and I have 11 pieces of paper here. So now what I'm gonna do is fold up each one, and if there's, maybe we use a box or anything you can find.
Can you use this drawer?
We can.
Can we just pick two, or the one, the one who's not gonna get it?
That is not very nice, Peter.
I don't think that's the way it goes, because-
I was thinking the same thing, Peter, earlier.
Because what we said is that we would draw 10, so.
Here, give me the drawer. Oh, jeez, that's a big drawer.
Goes all the way to Ipswich.
Dumped out your box, Pam.
No.
I can get something out of the kitchen.
Yeah, there must be a cup in there.
Yep, there will be. Yeah, why not? Thank you, sir. And then maybe you can just kind of back and forth?
Yeah.
Pick one passive, pick one passive back.
Do you want me to tell you a name?
Not yet.
We'll get them all drawn.
You have to pick one, too, Pam.
Pam, you can pick one.
Don't you?
Yeah, you'll want, I'll pick one, too, if you want me to.
Yeah.
Okay, second pass?
Yeah, there's five of us.
It's perfect?
One inside the other.
And there should be two, one left in the hat, there it is.
Aye.
All right, so, I will record the last names. Pam, just give me the last name. Okay.
And Contilli.
Yep. Alva?
I have Quinn.
Yep.
And Pitkin. You want us to put these back in?
I have Lorenzano and Browning.
I have Nissel, or however you pronounce that. And Greco.
Mm-hmm.
And I have Campbell and Goodrich.
And who's left in the hat?
Left in the hat is Dukas.
So Dukas was the one who did not get it. So the process from here is that I'll reach out to these 10 people, and as we advertised, by, I think we said the 27th, they have to pay the $1,000. If they don't pay, we said we would go to alternates, we would pick five, we can't even pick five, but Dukas is the alternate if someone drops something. That's it.
Perfect.
Okay, so the next item on the agenda is at 6:30, so do you wanna-
We can go into my report, or you can go through other things lower down on the agenda.
We have the Personnel Board regarding the Board of Assessors.
Yeah, I figured we should take that up when they're here to talk about the other thing anyway, because they may have comments on it.
Okay. Another item on the agenda is, this is under Personnel Board, to consider a request for Sergeant Danny Bruce regarding support, the Chief supports him to carry over 80 hours of vacation time the next fiscal year.
And that requires a vote of the Personnel Board, because it's over 40 hours.
Do you want to motion?
I'm gonna motion it, but I just, I'll motion it, and then ask for discussion, correct? Or do we discuss the-
Well, you could entertain the motion, somebody can move in second, and then you have discussion.
Okay, I'm gonna entertain a motion to approve Sergeant Dan Bruce carrying over 80 hours of vacation into the next fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
So the discussion I want is, we talked about this last year, because he did it last year also, and I think he's done it in the past, is this something that we wanna continue to have, I believe not many employees do this, correct?
Right.
And that's for-
I mean, I'd like employees to take their vacation and not carry over.
Yeah, I mean, so the issue would become, is it all taken at once, and how does it affect the operations of the department?
Well, what he says is, I'd prefer to carry time off into the next fiscal year to help with the current departmental needs. He says, I will use the carry time off in a timely fashion that will not create a burden to the department. The Chief is here, I wonder if he'd like to comment on it. I know it has to do with, they've been trying to bring the department up to a full slate over the last year, and perhaps it won't happen again next year, because you're gonna have what you need, but go ahead, Chief.
Correct. Currently, if he were to carry his days off, he's, you know, amenable to have it, not create a scheduling hardship for the department. It can be taken on days when there's additional people on, so it wouldn't have to be filled.
And so what happened this year was that he really didn't have the opportunity to take some of those days off, because he was needed.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
What is, what's the vacation time per year for, I mean, is-
So that varies, right, so the longer you're here, the more vacation time that you accrue.
And he carries over, and you-
You can carry up to 40 hours with the department head's permission, and if it's over that, it has to come to this Board, as the Personnel Board.
And is there payout if you leave and you-
Yes, so vacation time is considered a property right, and so when you leave, the employment of the town, whatever is unexpended gets paid in cash, at 100%.
And I did find it's not accrued, so it's not like, if he decided to quit tomorrow, he'd walk away with 600 hours' worth of vacation. It's, he gets four weeks, and if he didn't get an approval and didn't use it, he'd lose it, is that correct?
If he didn't get the approval to carry it, but come July 1, let's just take Dan out of it, any employee will get their new allotment, and the way it works is, the allotment is given on the first day.
Oh, okay.
Sick time accrues by the month.
Yeah.
Personal days are given as two at the very beginning of the period, and vacation time is given in a lump sum at the beginning of the period as well.
Hmm. That's kinda nice. And then, in terms of sick days, is sick days paid out at the end of the, I'm sorry to ask?
It varies. Hold on one second. You wanna get it? Sick time varies, depending on the unit that you're in, it can vary from 25, 20% to 25% to 30% of your accrued but unused sick time, but that's only upon retirement, not on resignation.
Okay.
So if you retire, you get that benefit. If you leave the employee of the town just to go to another job, and you're not retiring from Essex?
Yeah.
Then you leave that all on the table.
Okay, great.
Vacation time, though, and this is universal, private, public, you get 100% of it at the current rate of pay.
Okay, great, sorry to-
Okay, so I, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now we have 6:30.
Yep.
We have an update from the organizers of the Memorial Park Tennis Court Project. If you're going to speak, of course, remember to speak like six inches from the mic, but also, there's a piece of paper there, if you could put your name and address, just so we make sure we don't misspell your name.
Hi, I'm Sarah Wilworth Dyer, and this is Mike Stroman, and we have been working on keeping the tennis court project behind Memorial Park alive since November 2024, when there was a meeting with the DPW, and Marty Flood was presenting a plan to finish up the Memorial Park, but instead, he introduced Nate Woodman and Dan Mayer, who proposed tennis and pickleball courts at Centennial Grove. In December of 2024, we had a joint meeting with the both interested parties to discuss the merits of Memorial Park and Centennial Grove. Nate presented for Centennial Grove, and Mike and I advocated for Memorial Park. The town reps and attend- The town reps and attendants were Jody Harris, Ruth Perrine, Mike Galley, and there were various townsfolk who attended the meeting as well. And the directive from the town meetings, even though it wasn't a, it wasn't a specific town meeting, it was actually a town sanctioned meeting. It was a meeting of private citizens who were interested in furthering both projects. But the directive was for both parties to go and research further and come back to the town with findings. So in the winter of twenty-twenty-five, Mike and I spent many, many hours researching and contacting knowledgeable people, including Roger and John Bouchard of Sportstech, who are the go-to guys for tennis court construction. And we already had two prior quotes from them to do the Memorial Park project. They said they wouldn't update their quote unless we did the right thing and got an engineering firm involved first. And they also referred us to a woman named Kim Turner, who's the special projects coordinator for the city of Newburyport. And she's overseen many, many tennis court construction projects for the city. And she was helping us along and saying that Newburyport has mostly used CPC funding to do all their, get their projects done. So both Sportex and Ms. Turner advised us to go to a public bidding route, because the bids have become more competitive over time, and raising private funds for a project like this is going to be very difficult to do, which we've already experienced. Our next task were to find an engineering firm. We talked to Lisa O'Donnell, who you all know, an engineer and Essex Planning Board member. She referred us to someone named Cassidy Kraus, who's also an Essex resident and a landscape architect with the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation. He came and looked at the site and told us the project was absolutely doable, and that it's exactly the kind of project that he sees done all over the state. Cass then referred us to his colleague Brandon Kunkel of Weston and Sampson. Brandon made a site visit. He also opined that it was a doable project, and he drew up a quote for engineering and gave an opinion on the probable construction costs. I had Kim Drake, landscape architect at Camp Dressin-Riqui, and former planning board member, look at the proposals, and she said they were sound, and her estimation could be pared down by about seventy-five thousand dollars or so. So we had the quote in hand, and now we needed, and we had an idea of the cost, and we contacted Michelle French from the Community Preservation Committee to ask her how we go about presenting our case to CPC. We figured we had the forty-nine nine-nine-nine that was awarded at Fall Town Meeting in November of twenty-twenty-one, plus about fifty-seven thousand in private donations that Marty Flood is holding under the Friends of the Memorial Park Improvement Project. So at the same time, we learned that Article Thirty-five was placed on the annual town meeting warrant, and that article asked to move the forty-nine nine-nine-nine granted to the Memorial Park Project to, by Fall Town Meeting in November twenty-twenty-one, to the Centennial Grove Project. So in April, April sixteenth, the CPC held a meeting to hear about this Article Thirty-five. Nate Woodman was there to speak in favor of the transfer of funds, and Mike Strowman spoke to the fact that the Memorial Park Project is very much still in play, that we'd like to keep the funding we already have and perhaps obtain more funding in the future. So the CPC folks discussed the merits and sort of came up with an idea that maybe both projects should be supported, and that they would schedule a meeting before town meeting to discuss that. And that next meeting was the day of annual town meeting, just before town meeting. And the upshot of that meeting was to ask the Board of Selectmen to indefinitely postpone Article Thirty-five, and then to, and on Article Thirty-six, they added fifty thousand dollars to go towards the Centennial Grove Project. And we all know how that played out. In summary, we're on our, we are, we are on our way to finalizing a plan to get the tennis courts back up and running, and we want your continued support. And we, we know now from the DPW, we met with them in, on April twenty-eighth, and they are very much in favor of the project. However, because of the size and cost of it, they said that we have to go through the Board of Selectmen for things like signing contracts and administering grants. We are looking at a grant at the state level from the Division of Conservation Services, called the PARC program, P-A-R-C. We could be eligible for a hundred thousand dollar grant to get us moving on this project. However, we are going to miss the funding window that closes July eighth, because Essex does not have an up-to-date open space plan. And that's one, that is a first and foremost before you can apply for these grants. So where does that put us? It puts us in a position where we could potentially apply a year from now for the grant. The first year of that grant is engineering and design, and the second year is construction. We think we have, we have almost enough money to do the engineering now, and apply for the grant next year, and start construction July of twenty-twenty-seven. What have I left out?
I think that's it.
Okay.
So can I just ask, have you put this in an email and sent it to us? Because I don't think I've seen anything, like some, this is really great information.
Thank you.
But it's a lot to digest.
Yeah, it is.
Myself, first time as chair and Annie.
I forgot to mention, we met with Brendan last week, sent him the engineering quote and the proposal for construction. He can share those with you. We're happy to have him do that.
And I think what my concern is, is that we should know at least close to what the final would be, because us approving a grant, and the grant doesn't come anywhere close to hitting the final, then it's going to put us still in the same place with the tennis courts still sitting there and nothing being done to them.
Absolutely. So the, the quote for the engineering, the design permit and contracts is sixty thousand. And then if we want them to do, help us with construction administration, that would be another twelve-five. Their best guess on the construction cost is around four hundred thousand dollars. This is where Kim thought there was a lot of extra stuff in there that we wouldn't need. But obviously, we're looking at a project that could go anywhere from... Well, we're looking at somewhere around four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So I remember the...
Is the grant a hundred? The DCR grant was a hundred?
DCR grant, yeah, yep.
Yeah, is that the max?
No, it's not, but there are two, there are two ways to apply for this grant. One is with the small-town grant program, which is a hundred thousand max. There's another pool that we could get into if we could jump some more, pass some more hurdles about public access. And I think that one's like more, closer to four hundred. But I'm guessing you're then in a pool with bigger municipalities, and I, so we are estimating the hundred thousand will be the max that we get.
Plus, you'd have to, you'd have to grant the public access.
You probably would with the DC, with a hundred thousand dollar one, too, wouldn't you, public access?
Maybe.
I'm not sure what the requirements are for that. I imagine they may be required.
Yeah, I would guess. Can I ask another question?
Absolutely, good.
What was the response by the engineers, the different entities that looked at it, associated with rising seas and saturated soils, and how much that might add, and, you know, what to do about that?
Yeah, I could speak to that. Yes, thanks, Peter. Great question. That's certainly a concern that we've heard throughout this whole process.
Yeah.
And I think the engineers, the Weston Sampson guy was there, he didn't speak to, you know, he clearly understood this is probably the flood zone, hundred-year flood area. But he's proposing that, you know, in order to not disturb the site, the site would be ground up, the surface that's there now. It would be mixed with eight inches of crushed stone, then four inches of finished asphalt, or a couple layers of that. So he's talking about bringing up a foot, all in all, which I think will go an awful long ways, as well to avoid future flooding and maybe address occasional sea level rise issues.
Was he concerned about more frequent flooding impacting what would be there? I mean, right, right now, you know, it's not flooded that often, but as it gets flooded more and more, is that going to have an impact on the substrate and the subsurface?
Well, as designed, it would be designed to drain, like any, any place with eight inches of gravel. I mean, and they, you know, we talked about developing some kind of impermeable surface underneath this, but he discouraged that. You know, you want to keep it full draining, basically a massive French drain.
Yeah.
So if it does come in. But he also talked about the fact that the new road that was put in there some years back, it's, if you can see in that corner of the tennis court, it's a good eight inches or twelve above the tennis court. So he recommended regrading around the court to make sure that stormwater runoff may be getting in there now, and that would alleviate some possible flooding that's occurring there now at that one low spot.
They're not concerned about flooding impacting the court's, you know, life?
No, he didn't express any concerns about that. You know, these things have a lifespan of maybe thirty, forty years.
Yeah.
And, you know, that one's been there for quite a while. But his sense was, it's not, you know, subsiding in any unusual way due to substrate that's there now. And he didn't think that would be a problem down the road.
Okay.
So can I just ask, Beezy, as far as what he's talking about, about grinding up what's there, and is that disturbing it? I think that there was some thoughts of this bad soil there?
Yes, so there are a couple of issues. One, they'd have to go through some permitting, because they're disturbing the ground within two hundred feet of a river, within a hundred feet of a wetland. There's also an issue where we know that when we've dug there in the past, especially when we put the sewer line in, we encountered some materials that the railroad left behind many years ago. We don't know exactly what's under the tennis court proper, but that could be an issue. I think you're saying, Mike, that you're not looking at grinding any lower than what's there now?
Right, as far as...
Is it going to go up, Elva?
If you just take the top inch or two of asphalt, however much is there, grind it up, and mix it with the, you know, the stone that they've got put down as a base for the new court. So they're not talking about getting into anything that's underneath there still.
So I have a couple of concerns. One, I'd love to have that in an email, so I can look at all of this. Four hundred thousand is a huge amount, considering so many of the other things that we have on our, that are coming through the budgets over the next couple of years. And the other part was, is that the tennis courts has always been a private citizen type of thing. It wasn't something that the town said that they wanted to do, and that's why it's been sitting the way it has been. So I'm not saying we're closing it, but I'd like to have the information, so that then we can bring it up. Is that possible, to bring it up in the future?
It is. I think right now, they're asking, is there a plan, is there a way to get a design off the ground, so that when it comes time to apply for the, for the grant, the design is already done? Hopefully, our open space plan update will be done, because you know we're kicking that off. We got a grant to get that updated. But it's up to the board as to whether you want to even support the use of the money for the design until you have more details about what the end cost of the project would be, and whether or not you're comfortable with that.
Yeah. Right now, I'm not comfortable, because we don't have the details. And I'm also concerned because...
They did send me some stuff, but then they were coming in to talk about it. I can provide that to the board, and you can, you can talk about it again.
I would like to have, so, you know, all these little things add up. So you can spend the money, but then if it's two years from now before you put in a tennis court, and then the price has gone up another hundred thousand, that would, you know, be fruitless for us to...
They can spend the donated money on collecting some of the information.
We have almost enough in donations so far to do the engineering outside of, you know, asking for more money. However, it's a question of process and how this works, because as we were saying to Brendan the other day, if this, if the Board of Selectmen are the ones that are going to be in charge of this project, would you want to be in charge of the funds that are paying for the project? And so I have to sort of get, you know, I have to coordinate with you and Marty Flood as to how we do that. Marty's on board with turning the money over or, or writing the checks, but we just don't know how to proceed.
Right, so it sounds like the board wants to digest that information, and we can bring it up at the next meeting, because it looks like you're asking whether the board wants to receive those funds, and they're only going to do that if they're comfortable, I think, with the ultimate goal and the ultimate cost.
And I, and you know, again, it had been always a private citizen type of venture, and having us take it on makes it now a town thing and putting responsibility on us, and that concerns me.
Right, and that's, that's why they came tonight, to try to get a sense of where the board is on moving forward.
And I think it would always be a town thing, even if it was a private citizen's, well, never mind. I'm going to, I'm going to take that back, sorry.
Well, again, as you know, the DPW is responsible for that property. They're supporting this going forward, which I think is very important. But to your point about the long-term cost, if everybody waited till you had all the money, all the issues in line, it's going to be another five years to get through the design and permitting. And I think we've got a good, solid chunk of money to start the process, and it's an iterative process, clearly. We've got, if we could get the design permitting done and manage to, a grants manager of Brendan, and get the open space plan done by next, by the grant award time, we could apply for that with plans. They do require we have some design plans in place. So all these things have to be done in sequence, not all at once. And as far as shortfalls of money between what we have now and what, any grant we may get, the Conservation, Preservation Committee acknowledged they have additional funding that I would imagine we're going to have to go back to them through town meeting to authorize whatever the delta difference would be between what we've got, how far we've gotten, to get us over the hump. And I think they seem very agreeable to doing that down the road. But again, I think it's, we're just trying to get the first step done, which is design permitting, and then we'll reassess where things stand, ours funding, and go on.
How much was the design permitting, sixty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the money's there. Marty Flood's tired of holding it, wants to deal with that. So I think this could be a win-win to get him off the hook, get the project underway, and, you know, give us, maintain some momentum for getting that project done.
Annie?
Yeah. I remember Kathy Penoria was doing this years ago. They never got to design or anything?
They did.
It was at a different location?
It was at a different location.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I'm looking forward to seeing what you guys have. Thanks for doing all that work.
Great. So there's nothing for us to vote at this point, correct?
No, I wanted the proponents to have an initial discussion, so, because there would be questions, and you want to hear it directly. Now you can do some work at looking at what they've prepared, and then have another discussion at your next meeting.
Yeah, and I just, I mean, for this town, I'm a little bit concerned about having two sets of courts. I know that there's people that have the passion for it in the downtown location, and there's people that have the passion for it over at the Grove, and if we... And if we, I can't imagine that we would get funding for both, and that's... Go ahead, Annie.
What do we have? I mean, I've never seen a plan for The Grove.
Right now, there was an idea that came to the selectmen about clearing some trees and putting in pickleball courts down there. But the selectmen said until there was a more defined idea of exactly where and how it was going to be funded, a lot of it would be by volunteer professional tradespeople, but there would also be costs that nothing would move forward until there was more presented. And the same, they said, to the folks that would like to renovate the tennis courts. And so, as you know, at the town meeting, the $50,000 proposal did not pass. And so that particular project, unless it's going to be, unless they're going to come back and say, "We found a way to handle 100% of the costs," I don't see that moving forward yet.
Do you have a plan for Centennial Grove right now?
No, we do not have a plan for future renovations.
What's there now? Do we have, like, anything?
No.
We don't have that?
You, we have an aerial, but anyone can look that up. We do not have an engineer's design plan showing what's there now.
Or even a strategic plan for what we want to do.
No, it's been different people approaching the selectmen and asking whether things could be done incrementally, and the selectmen have given their permission each time there was a request.
Okay.
Excuse me, to your point of the two-court issue, you know, as you probably know, initially the rehab of this town court was going to talk about including pickleball. It met with a lot of resistance, basically by the butter there. And so I think as this project's evolved, we just want tennis there, and the CPC has agreed, you know, that two courts is a conceivable thing and primarily doing pickleball out there at Centennial Grove, which is a noise issue. It's the perfect spot for, you know, reducing noise annoyances from neighbors. And it also would avoid conflicts between pickleball users and tennis court players, which is an issue out there in the world these days.
Yeah, and I, you know, so the things that I'd like to see is making sure the size is exactly the same size because we already have issues with parking and, you know, ideally, if we didn't have tennis courts, they would have additional parking, which is a concern to a lot of the businesses downtown that they have parking issues. So I just want to have your information, and I know Beezy has some of the design stuff, and so that we can look it over. I don't know that I feel comfortable with the town taking on this. Again, it was a private citizen type of effort, and I don't, you know, that's a lot of money for us, for the town to take on with all the other things that are on our plate.
Well, there's money that's already in the town accounts. It's not going to increase taxes on anybody's property. The money's sitting there, it's been allocated, and it's unencumbered right now. And by law, you know, 10% every year is due to go to open space like tennis court rehab. So there's money there, and I don't think, you know, of course, there's a lot of money, but there is money at the CPC funds, and I think there's a willingness to use it in this fashion.
So there is, you know, noise-canceling fencing, because this is not the first place where that's been done. And they, pickleball courts have been put in other places, and I would imagine that this noise-canceling fencing equipment, whatever it is, would be a lot cheaper than putting in pickleball courts from scratch. Might be worth looking at that if you guys are so inclined to include pickleball as part of the project.
Well, I think we've mulled that over and feel that it's just too much of a contentious issue and prolong, protract the discussions here. And in addition to the cost, I don't think how effective, wouldn't be much appreciated even with the...
Yeah, from the fence to the house is not that great of a distance, even with...
No, but they've got a lot of stuff out there that blocks the sound and all that kind of stuff, you know? So I don't know. I mean, you know, it might be at least worth considering, you know, investigating that to see if it really is effective or not. I don't know.
So do you want, so what exactly would you like from us now, starting this going forward?
I think that they're looking for the narrative. You gave me some engineering documents, and I'll share those with them. But they're looking for kind of a narrative, and I think, Sarah, you, you know, you laid out a bunch of points.
Pretty much what I recited tonight.
Right, yeah.
All right, I'll just spiff it up for you.
And basically what they ask is, because the part that I, again, I think that the board has to really mull over is who's going to be the responsible parties? And I just don't know if the town or the Board of Selectmen are the ones, since it started as a private. So that's why I want the information so that we can have, we're looking at details in order to make a decision.
We've always managed those courts, though, if there's cracks, fill them or line painting or whatever.
Yeah, but there hasn't been much maintenance on those courts in a long time because of the...
But that's been the town.
Yeah, the DPW.
But it's a public resource.
It is.
But the revamping or whatever, the reconstruction of them has always been a private effort. But that doesn't mean it's not a public asset.
Well, I don't know if it's always been, but since 2021, it was private. But that was, you know, the quotes have just been going up and up and up, and then add on to that the cost of engineering and the projects getting to the point where it would be really difficult to make it a 100% private-funded project.
Shipbuilders, remember the shipbuilders, the, whatever the team was, the little kids' ship, was it Shipbuilders?
Yep.
They were...
Athletic Association.
They offered to do it for $30,000, I think, in like 2010, and we let perfect be the enemy of the good. We didn't take advantage of it, so, you bet. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I can cover a couple of quick things from my report. Well, I wanted to mention that the water filtration plant, we're looking to install an exterior camera. We got a quote on that. We got the money at town meeting. We do not have the unions, the bargaining for that within the union context has not been completed. That doesn't prevent the town from installing the unit and not turning it on. I wanted to know whether the board wanted me to get started on that, or do you want to wait for the bargaining process and then get started on it?
I'll let you talk.
I'd say we should do it now. Who knows when the bargaining process is going to finalize?
And that's exactly my feeling is. I don't know if we have to write them a note to say we...
Not to install it, it's whether it's in use or not.
So do you need me to take a vote on that? Or are you all...
No, I'm just making sure the board is comfortable with me proceeding, and it sounds like you are.
Okay.
And then I think I can cover this request for proposals for the lease of 28 Martin Street. Since the value, the market value of a lease of that property over 10 years exceeds $50,000, the town is required, even though the town meeting has already said the selectmen are authorized to allow another 10-year lease, we can't assume that the entity that's leasing it now will be the entity that gets the lease going forward. I think it's highly likely, but the process is such that I need to put out a request for proposals. I've shown the board what we did the last time this came around. I'm ready to go and put that out on the street. I just wanted to get from the board that you're fine with me proceeding before I do.
So before I take, I'm a little bit concerned, $100? I mean, if it's the current $100 for, you know, for the shipbuilders, but, I mean, if we're putting it out to RFP, should we increase that?
I would say that if you get someone like the Shipbuilding and Historical Society to come in, what they're doing is they're providing really services to the town to take care of the town's historic artifacts without cost to the town. So you're getting the curation services, but you're also getting somebody that's leasing and maintaining the building and grounds without cost to the town.
They do maintain the grounds?
They do, that's part of the lease. And so you're getting the town's historic artifacts taken care of 10 years at a time, and you're getting the parcel maintained and taken care of. Could you increase the amount? Absolutely you can, but I'm trying to say that there's a very big benefit to the town the way things are structured right now.
But there's no guarantee the next, if somebody else comes in and says, "I'll take, I want it"?
And you don't like the proposal, you can reject all bids.
It would only be if the entity that has it now doesn't want to do it.
I mean, if you would like, I could put in the document at a lease rate to be negotiated with the successful proposer.
I think that's good, even though it could be the same. It could still be 100, at least if it's going out for RFP, I don't, I don't want 100 and somebody saying that that's all they want to pay.
Yeah.
Can I ask, is there, what is that property cost other than the maintenance of it? Is there any other cost associated with it that they could be...
There is no other cost. They pay the utilities, they pay to maintain it, they pay to keep the artifacts and records in good condition. It just happens to be a town asset, but there's no budget for it. We don't pay anything toward it.
And then in terms of the archival nature of the work they do, right? We don't have any requirements about storage or anything like, we don't tell them how to do it, they...
We can't because by and large, the things that they manage are not property of the town, but they are part of the town's historic fabric. And they have way more artifacts and documents than the town itself owns. So what they're doing is providing the in-town access to those records and artifacts that are in their custody and control, but they offer that up to the town as a resource. And they, of course, will work with anyone in town who's interested in the history or seeing something. So it's kind of a symbiosis. We do have historic records down in our vault, but we don't have any historic artifacts per se. We don't have the storage space for them, and in fact, they know more about good preservation than we do.
Okay.
Now, again, it might not be them, but I think that's likely. If it's not them and you don't like that proposal that is rated most favorable, then you don't have to, you don't have to move forward. So there's no risk at this point in time. But is it okay to move forward with the change, saying that the lease rate will be negotiated?
Yes.
Okay, I will do that. And you're at seven, and I'm going to step over here to run the presentation. And so we're ready for the senior needs.
Next item on the agenda is the, Anne Buckley from the Council on Agent, is, had done a survey with UMass Boston, and she's going to go review the findings.
Hello, and good evening, everyone. Well, thank you for having us this evening. We have a special guest with us this evening, too, Sue Berger from UMass Boston, who's going to run us through a short presentation. I believe that Caitlin Coyle, the director of the program at UMass Boston, is here with us as well. I reached out to Caitlin, is she...
Before you go any further, Anne, can you make sure that yourself and the guest fill that out, just so we have that for when we do in the meeting notes?
Yes, absolutely. All right. Through Orchard Road. I'd like to do my introduction in just a moment, but I would also like to just acknowledge for everyone here, the members from the COA who are here with us this evening. We have our chair, Diane Polly, our vice chair, Sue Parity, we have our treasurer, Kay Joseph, let's see, our director, Tess Leary, is here. Did I miss anybody from the...
And board member Nancy Frieden.
On, online, yes. Nancy? Hi, Nancy. So two years ago, we came before the board and were presenting what we thought were some interesting statistics of numbers in terms of what we were seeing for engagements and unique visits to the CO, to the Senior Center. And what we were noticing was that we had a very sudden rise in the number of new visits and people that we were enrolling for services. For understanding of what that meant, we started to take a look at the historical numbers of people who had been coming before us into, get involved with our services and what we could maybe anticipate in the coming seasons, in the coming fiscal years. And what we saw was a rather rapid rise, and not unexpectedly so, because we have the baby boomer generation who is sort of a large cohort, and when they move between generational points, they tend to all go as a large, a large group. So we weren't sure what we were looking quite at until we started to go into the town clerk's data. And what we saw was that we were moving from roughly in the 25% range of residents over the age of 60 at that time in town, and then we were already moving beyond 30% two years ago. As we stand today, based on the 2025 census, didn't change much from the 2024 census, we now have 1,232 or so residents who are over the age of 60. And why 60, not 65 is important because the formula grant for which we receive funding for senior programming is based on the number of residents who are aged 60, not 65. The town's total resident headcount was 3,573, I believe, and that did not change much from the end of 2024. So that is roughly 34.5% of the town's population as we stand today is already at 35, 34.5%. And when we took a look at what was coming in the next few years, because you said, okay, we're coming past the point of the baby boom generation, so what will that mean for the rate of rise? We expected that as Gen X started to cross age 60, that the rate of rise would slow down. But what did that mean in the aggregate for what our aging population in town would look like? And we don't still really fully know, but that's what prompted us to come. Because what we anticipated, based on what we could see in the birth cohorts two years ago, has not really changed much from the birth cohorts that we're seeing today, which are the birth years, those who were born 1965 through 1969. In other words, today's 55 through 59-year-olds. When you add all of them into the aggregate number that we have already, we are at close to 40% of residents who will be aged 60-plus by the time we get to fiscal year 2029. Now, what does that really mean? So 60 to centenarian is essentially where our formula grant runs, and as we stand today, our residents are from the birth years 1925 to 2025. So we have five generations spanning a century, a full century. What does that really mean? So when we came before you with those numbers, we were asking for some, some funding to help us really do a little bit deeper digging into the demographics here in town and trying to understand what kind of a tool that we could create to work cross-functionally with all of the boards and committees here in town so that we could have a similar, common language and understanding and just a common planning tool. And we had just come off of, it's funny that you mentioned the strategic plan, we had just come off the strategic plan, that's, we're only, what, in year two of it now? And we would like to be able to have a very good diagnostic, not diagnostic tool, but a planning tool that we could bring to the table with some, with some real understanding of what the needs are. And as we know, all of our needs here in town are really intergenerational. They're not based on just the needs of one particular group. So with that, we are very grateful to the selectmen and for Brendan for helping us secure funding, for working with one of the most preeminent demographic departments for gerontology in, or actually just for gerontology in the entire United States, right here in our own backyard at UMass Boston. And at the time, our director, Kristen Crockett, was a graduate of the program and was able to speak very well to what they had to offer. So my initial outreach to Caitlin Coyle occurred prior to my coming here. So when we presented our case for why we thought we needed to do a little bit deeper dive into what to expect in coming years, it was really wonderful to be able to foster that partnership. And so the process really began two years ago. We began in earnest this time exactly one year ago. We were in the queue for a year. And at that point, I was introduced to Sue Berger, who I'm going to introduce to you now in a moment to take over and give our presentation. And she will describe the process, the methods, our findings. I will say that the interesting thing about what they offer, among many, many wonderful things that they offer, is they've created something called the Elder Index, which really takes a strong look at, it's a, and Sue will describe that, and maybe Caitlin, if she has the chance to speak later as well. But the Elder Index has been used all over the country and throughout the federal and state governments in helping understand what is the actual cost of living for elders and what the impact is... and what the impact is by state and by county level. It does not have the ability to drill down into municipal town level, which is one of the limitations of what we're about to speak to tonight. But the, the town responded, as always, with tremendous civic-mindedness and pride. When we sent out over 2,800 surveys in the fall, we received back 585. The comments, open-ended responses that people gave are the gold, and we just are beginning to, to be able to read through them. People were thoughtful, they were, they were very engaged and very civic, they were very honest, some of them were, were very raw, but everything was just very, very respectful and eager to be, to be heard and to participate. And how lucky are we? So, I think without further ado then, I would like to introduce Sue Berger from UMass Boston, and we've had a wonderful collaboration for the past year, so welcome, Sue. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Anne. Thanks. Well, Anne, you gave, you could give the presentation, I think. Do I have a clicker? Is someone else?
You can.
So, I'm gonna just like wave my hand, but unfortunately, I have like bullets waved, so you'll be clicking a lot, Brendan.
I'm.
Okay. Thanks for having me. Caitlin, as Anne mentioned, is online, and I'm gonna be doing the presentation, and she'll be available to answer questions or participate in the discussion at the end. So, thanks. Before I get started, because often at the end, you never have time, but it's really important that I acknowledge some people without who this project wouldn't be doable. So, Anne and Tess, without your guidance, Anne especially, you, you got this off the ground, you made it go, you pushed, and it's been great, and Tess as well, both of you, the many meetings and the insights are really appreciated. But also, every stakeholder or town leader who took the time to let me interview them, the people who participated in the focus groups, I know some of you are here, and all the residents who completed the survey, without any of that, there'd be no data and no report. So, thank you. Excellent. I'm gonna talk for maybe 10, 15 minutes, and I'm really just giving you a sampling. I'm gonna talk about the project, and what we did, and how we did it, but then a real sampling of the results and the recommendations. The report has lots of details, it's 100 somewhat pages long, and I encourage you to look at it for more detail. So, people want to live in Essex, they want to grow old in Essex. As Anne pointed out, there's a large number of people who are older, and they have diverse socio, nec, socioeconomic, physical, social, and emotional needs. And so, the town commissioned this needs assessment to partner with UMass Boston, to help first inform the COA and the town of Essex on what the needs are for these older adults and future programming and services. But really, all the recommendations are important for the town in general, and all the local organizations and town departments to understand the strengths and challenges to aging in Essex. So, what we did, we did a demographic profile, really looking at age, health status, living situation, economic status of people in Essex. We interviewed 10 people, 10 key town leaders, we held two focus groups, we reviewed some key town documents, like the annual report. We did a mini Senior Center comparison with some peer towns that are similar in geographic size and location. And then we sent out a community survey to all residents 18 and older. And this is the percentage we received, but overall, we received from all the residents a 21% response rate, which is a fine, you can click it again, which is a fine response rate. But often, we send out our surveys to just those 50 and older, and for, if, looking at that, we got a 28% response rate, which is actually really good. And it's not surprising that the people in their 20s and 30s didn't fill it out as more, as you can see from this chart, that those in their 60s and 70s filled it out the most. Keep going. So, I'm gonna talk just about a few of the findings. So, the first one is Anne pointed to, that you have a lot of older adults, you can click again, that 34% of those 60 and older, uh, 40, 30, the share of those 60 and older is 34%. That's a really large percentage, and that's today. Next. And that's growing. So, older residents already make up a significant share of the Essex population, and it's continued, expected to continue to grow. So, if you look at this, and let's see, I have this, the, oh, there you go. The yellow is those 75 and older, and the orange is those 60 to 74. So, if you just look at this, in 2000, there were about 18% of the population was 60 and older. And that's increased to 22% in 2010, to 27% in 22. Right now, you're already at 34%. So, keep in mind that these projection data are based on past data, not on currently. And so, I guess the key takeaway here is that this is gonna continue to increase till about 2030. And then, as we're seeing in many towns throughout Massachusetts, after 2030, it's expected to stay, not decrease or not increase, but still stay at a large share. So, right now, you're at 34%, say you go up to 40%, that's expected to say, stay, that you're gonna have 40% or share of your population is 65, is 60, gonna be 60 and older for an extended number of years. And then, older residents want to stay in Essex as they age. We asked in the survey how important it is, is it for you to stay in Essex or remain as you age? And all ages, 80% or more, felt like it was somewhat or very important. And those 70 and older, 94% felt like it's seven, it was somewhat or very important for them to age in Essex. However, many people are struggling to stay in Essex. So, if you look at this, 35% of those 60 and older are living under 50,000 or less. And as Anne mentioned, we looked at that in comparison to the Elder Index, which shows, based on a number of factors, of health and transportation and living situation, how much you need to live in Essex County, as she said, doesn't look at Essex. But there's many situations where people need more than 50,000 a year to live. So, clearly, some Essex older adults are having a lo, a hard time being able to stay in Essex. And that came out loud and clear in our survey as well. So, we asked how concerned people are about their ability to stay in their home due to, due to housing-related costs, and 82% of all ages said they're very concerned, including 39, said they're very or somewhat concerned, including 39% who are very concerned. That's a pretty high percentage. The cost of living, including property taxes and utility, was a top concern. As Anne said, Essex residents have a lot to say, and they said it in the surveys. And some of the comments that they said related to cost of living, including, our property is relatively large, and the time is coming when my spouse and I won't be able to manage it. High taxes and the cost of maintenance and normal ongoing repairs would become prohibitive for us. Exorbitant taxes may have, I may have to sell and move to another town, and real estate taxes, water and sewer costs, rising cost of living in general. This is just a sampling of the many comments related to cost of living that are challenges for people to age in Essex.
Sue, could I just put one, could I put one comment on that?
Sure.
So, what, what Sue was just saying was really incredible, and it's important to note that we had 539 open responses to that particular question, and as Sue said, she just gave you a sampling, but that was the single highest responded, open-ended response question that we had in the survey. And the, the vast majority, with the exception of about 25 or 30, all responded to that question. So, sorry.
No, that's fine, that's fine. Definitely came up over and over again, in, in just different ways. So, people want to stay in Essex, they're struggling financially, but they're also struggling with their homes. So, many Essex homes, and this is a question on the, on the survey, of, do you have first-floor living or step-free access? And many don't. And as you can imagine, those in the 70s or 80s are the ones where my, who, people who may struggle the most. And a fair number don't have one-floor living, but a significant number don't have the light blue step-free access. And even if they can get home and, you know, stay on one floor, not having step-free access leads to social isolation and being homebound. So, it has real implications for older adults. We also asked, in the next five years, if you needed or wanted to move from your current residence, what kind of housing would you prefer in Essex? This is just a sampling of the cho, of the choices, but I wanted to point out the top two, that those 80 and older and 70 to 79, the light blue and the blue, wanted senior independent living, and then the 80 and older wanted assisted living, neither of which, unfortunately, are available in Essex, right? They want to stay in Essex, but there's not 55-plus communities. So, the housing doesn't necessarily match what people want. Another one of the write-ins, or another top concern then, that came out in the write-ins, along with financial concerns, was limited accessible and downsizing housing options. For example, the lack of smaller housing, condos, apartments. Once I can't care for this large property, there are no smaller options. My home is getting to be too big, and few options to downsize here. Friends have had to move away because they can't find affordable housing. So, affordable, accessible, and downsizing housing was another key challenge that emerged from the data. And then we looked at participation at the Essex Council on, Council on Aging by age, and this chart shouldn't be of a surprise, I wouldn't have expected a lot of people from 18 to 60 to be participating, and this gradual increase is what you see often in towns. But of the COA users, 45% participate only a few times a year. So, then we asked, what factors limit your participation? And we looked at it by user status. So, the light blue is those non-users, and the dark blue is users. It's not surprising that the non-users, they're not old enough, right? There are a lot of people who are in their 20s, 30s, and 40s who answered this, but I think what's important to note, and it's not here, but in the survey, is that 22% of those 60 to 69 answered, I'm not old enough. So, that it, and, and also, a lot of people responded to, I don't need any of the services offered. It talks about the image of the Senior Center, or the Council on Aging. That's, it's a place where you need help, you're older, you, you need support and services, as opposed to the image of an act, of a place to go for active and healthy living for socialization. It's worth noting that some people don't know what's offered, that 19% of users aren't interested in the programs offered, and I talk more about what they'd like to see. And then 13% noted a lack of sufficient parking. And I put that up, there were lots of other choices and other information in the report, because the lack of sufficient parking was the first thing I noticed when I came to the Senior Center the very first time a year ago, and I thought, where do people park? So, and 13% people said that's a challenge for them. So, then we looked at priority areas that people wanted for development or expanding programs, and outdoor exercise or indoor fitness came up high, as, you know, most people, that's what everyone wants, across all ages. The younger cohorts wanted more indoor fitness, the, the, I'm sorry, more outdoor exercise and fitness, the older cohorts, a little bit more towards indoor fitness, but that was across the board. Those tennis courts you were talking about when I first came in, go along with that, or pickleball courts. People also, I only listed the ones that 20% or more responded on, there are lots of other options. But people want, and these are all things you actually have, just areas to develop or offer more of. People commented on the, how valuable and how much they appreciate the Council on Aging. I haven't used the COA much, but when I have, it's been great, such as durable medical equipment after knee replacement surgery, or shine. While I don't need services today, I realize others do, and I will likely need services in the future. And Exa, Exa, Essex, I'm sorry, COA offers so much for the aging population. That said, capacity is limited, there's only three part, three staff, all part-time, and very limited parking. And one participant noted, we need a larger space at our Senior Center for more than 20 people for exercising. So, I'm gonna take just those three challenges and talk a little bit about some suggestions. One of the first key challenges was the financial insecurity is a top concern. So, we recommend promoting information that already exists about the supports and explore ways to implement new programs. So, the tax work-off program came across in surveys and interviews and focus groups, either they really wanted it, or it's really challenging to implement in Essex because of the staffing needs and all sorts of limitations. But we really encourage you to explore some ways to offer tax relief. And there are other programs, tax work-off programs, not, might not be feasible for Essex, but maybe tax freezes or tax deferment, other ways. To address financial security, consider ways of connecting residents with local resources for home repairs and modifications, including funding and people who, contractors, maybe partner with local contractors to give discounts to certain residents. Lots of creative ways to address that. Another key finding was that the COA is gonna see, have increased demand for programs and services, and those increasing demands are gonna have, these older adults have different needs, let's put it that way, more diverse needs. So, it, to address many of the recommendations, I guess the bottom line is, throughout this whole report, we make tons of recommendations for the Council on Aging, but more staff is really needed to address it. So, the first, first finding is, a recommendation is to address the need for additional staff, but then also to expand that, your reach, and to maybe change the image a little, find ways to connect with residents as they age, such as sending a birthday greeting to them when they turn 60, inviting them to the COA, something very low-cost and simple that might increase the reach of the Senior Center and the COA. And then, the other key finding that I talked about was limited accessible and affordable housing. And one suggestion is just, or the recommendation is to continue to develop, implement, and advertise information that's available already. Consider hosting a housing choice seminar to encourage proactive thinking about aging in place, you know, have real estate agents and financial professionals and contractors come and share their perspective. And then I want, I only talked about those three challenges, but I wanted to just let you know what the other challenges are that we found, and that are highlighted in the report, and with lots of data to support and recommendations. So, this one's probably not a surprise to many, limited transportation options in Essex are a challenge to aging in place. And many people kind of commented, if I no longer drive, how can I live in Essex? Especially because there are no services or not a lot of things in Essex. Communication within departments and among residents could be improved. Caregiving is common and support is needed, and a segment of Essex population is, is at risk for social isolation. So, those are the key takeaway challenges. There's lots more detail and examples and recommendations in the report. But I wanted to give you an overview. Thank you for letting me participate and be a part of Essex, which is a wonderful community. Whenever I come up here, I like to come early and just enjoy your town. We're open to questions, comments?
The report is on the website, even now.
Great. The report is available. Uh-huh.
34% over 60, what are you finding in other communities of this size? Not necessarily in North Shore, but maybe in central or western Massachusetts?
Sure. I'd say, right now, in the late, in the late, high 20s, 25 to 28, it, it clearly varies, but 34% for now is high, absolutely.
Why do you think?
Um, why do you think? People love Essex, it's, you know, I don't know. I don't know why it's, it's large, and you're, it's not like you're the only town, but I would say more broadly, it's in the high 20s. I don't know why, it's a small town, many of the towns I'm talking about are much lar, I'm thinking of, are much larger.
Yeah.
I, yeah. Do you have a, a response?
Well, I just have one sort of hypothesis, and we were not able to, as much as we tried to tease it out of the data, but I think if we spend some time digging into, with, with the help of the town clerk, I think we can put a historical picture together. And my sense of it, at the beginning of this, and I didn't know if it was true or not, I still don't, but my sense was that we had a larger number of people who have been here all their lives. And, and then when you add in over the decades, the, the number of people who moved in, who are maybe in that 58 to say 68, you know, range, that they came here, particularly after we regionalized, and they brought their, their children in because of the regionalization efforts. So, I'm thinking that that got the number maybe a little bit larger, but I do think we were, that's one of the reasons, some of the questions in there, if you did the survey, asked if you, how long you had been here in town. So, it, it, there is, there is some information there, but it's So there is, there is some information there, but it's not quite as detailed as I was hoping we were going to get. But we do have that, in the report, there's a pie chart that shows, or a bar chart that shows how many years people had been in town. So that's one hypothesis, and we'll dig into that a little bit more, too.
I can add to that for a second, that the survey was a really nice selection of people who've been here less than five years versus people who've lived here 45 years or more, which is really nice to hear from that variety. But I think Anne's referring to the question of how long have you been in your, has your house been in your family? And that was 18% of survey respondents, which is a significant amount of people who responded to the survey where their homes been in their family a long time, or at least more than one generation.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few. Thanks, this is really very good. I have some questions, and some of them might be relevant to you, but I know that you guys had asked for some budget increases this year, and that didn't happen. So I guess, and you don't have to answer this now, are you looking for that, or like a more full-time person that can handle, like what's, what are you kind of seeking? And maybe the answer isn't tonight, but I'm just kind of...
Sure, Annie, no, you're right, you're spot on. I think we both, what we're anticipating is short-term and then longer-term. We think that the biggest, the biggest impact will be, the good news is we have time before we start to really see a heavy impact at the Senior Center. I think we could be six to 10 years before we see the large rise happen all at once, where the first of the baby boomers are turning 80 this year, and it's when we see the health span start to decline after 75, usually typically after 80, that we tend to, and you saw that on the chart tonight, that the rise in unique visits to us really goes up more steeply after age 80. So the fastest percentage rise that we have right now in our cohort are the, it's the fastest rate of rise, not the biggest number right now today, but that's in our octogenarians and non-ogenarians, and we have a lot more of them than we have in the past, so that we are looking for that maybe in time. But short-term, we are working now with two and a half positions of people spent with volunteers. Tess can address that maybe, she's probably the best person.
She's ready. Yeah, she is.
Thanks, Sue. So Annie, an answer to your question regarding funding and financial resources, the staffing, the money that was requested for this current, well, the upcoming fiscal year, was to keep the outstanding staff that we have, to make sure that we give them some incentive to stay, because the center is operating really well with three part-time staff. In terms of future staffing, I think part of the survey, in my opinion, is for the town to use as planning purposes in the future, whether that's additional staff at the Senior Center, how taxes might be affected if 40% of the population is 60 and above and many are on a fixed income. But generally speaking, our volunteer hours that we currently have represent, they basically represent three other additional staff, like part-time, or two full-time staff, which none of us are, but that's how many hours our volunteers are putting in. There are three of us in addition to us.
Yeah, and so I noted that, that you had said something about there's more volunteer hours than we really, than we have full-time, or not full-time, but...
We have volunteers, we have one volunteer who is there more than any of the staff, like weekly hours.
So then that work program, that makes me wonder about that, because they are working, right?
They are.
So is that an opportunity?
Yes, they are. They are doing things that allow us to actually provide real services to the citizens of Essex, rather than, you know, they are answering the phones, they're doing tech help, they're even helping with financial advising. It's, they provide a real great service to us.
And I think that this will help us to make those type of decisions. You know, we've been discussing the pros and cons to doing anything, whether it's a tax reduction or a work off, so we still need to work on that, but I think that we'll be coming back to the council to say, okay, what's your priority? Is it more staff? Is it, is it this, is it that? Because as you know, taxes are high, and so anything we do is just going to add to being taxes higher.
Oh, absolutely. I don't think, just the recommendation for additional staff, that has come from the survey, that has not come...
No, no, no.
From us.
Right. And that's why I'm saying, this is good information to have, to make those, to have good, to have data to make decisions.
Right, and it's not just for the Senior Center or the seniors, it's for the town and operating and making, you know, planning decisions and choices in the future that 40% of the population may or may not be able to afford, so.
So I just had a question about the circuit breaker. Do you feel like Essex residents know, because I looked it up and I don't understand it, I mean, I wouldn't know how to navigate it. Do you feel like they understand how to leverage that, and is that something that...
No, no, I mean, and we put it in our newsletter, we encourage people to come in, it's, but no.
Okay. So just some other things that just came up. Native does a means, they were thinking about a means-tested senior program. I'm just throwing this stuff out there, that there are ideas that we could leverage, I think, for relief, and I think it'd be great to continue the conversation with you guys. You know, this is a huge report, it's a lot, I didn't get all the way through it.
Yeah, there's a lot in there.
But I think, you know, we should be creative with some solutions that we could possibly leverage. And I'll just say one thing, that, you know, I know there's been kind of some divide, I think. I think it's not necessarily constructive about maybe parents and kids and seniors, and I think that the reality is that you can, I think, parents with kids would be your greatest advocate to help kind of advance some things that we need in town, and I think working together is much more productive than dividing us. So I am really looking forward to working with you and would love to talk more about this.
Wonderful, yeah, I think, thank you. We have a great relationship with Essex Elementary. We just, our intern from Manchester Essex Regional is finishing up and offering a great program called Seniors Helping Seniors for the first time, where graduating high school seniors will be helping Essex seniors with yard work. It's all through the Manchester Essex School System, but with tasks that might otherwise be more challenging for them to do. So it's a day of service, seniors helping seniors. So we have a great, we're building great relationships with intergenerational parties, but...
And Tess, I just want to bring up also, because I've been talking to Jen regarding, Habitat for Humanity is now also helping out seniors with housing projects, correct? With repairs on housing? So she sent me a link, and I can, you know, share it if you're interested, Annie, because I think it's very important when things are so expensive now to have resources to look into.
Yes, one of the things that I gleaned specifically from this report was to focus more on providing solutions and resources for housing repairs, housing, new, different housing, just different resources for saving money, whether it's through insurance, different programs that are available, you know, the lie heap with Action, there's all different things, and it's kind of on us to really try to get the word out more than, I mean, it's in our newsletter, but clearly it's not, it's not. People are not taking it enough advantage. But I would like to say, our SHINE program, and specifically, which is basically Medicare Counseling, and it's just an acronym, over the course of the year, we're saving people of Essex over $100,000. So that is a significant impact, and we're going to hopefully have a couple of more SHINE counselors to help us out with that, to maybe be able to save even more. But I'll let you get back to the...
Can I ask one more, it's a Brendan question. Affordable housing, isn't there some, something in there that's about repairing homes so that people can age in place? Is that true or am I lying?
In the report?
No, it's in affordable, no, 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 don't be sorry.
There are programs that could be set up, but we haven't gone to that point yet.
Oh, so it's something you have to adopt?
It's, it's, right now, the Affordable Housing Trust is just trying to set up a housing production plan. That's the sole goal right now. I think, and I'll ask the people from MAPC that are helping us, I'll ask about those types of programs so that we can be sure to hit on them as part of considering the new plan.
Yeah, thank you.
That's great. I mean, it's really nice to have some hard data behind what a lot of us knew, but even some things that we didn't know. So it's a really good, money well spent to do this.
Well, and I also, it's great to hear the discussion, because that's, you know, there's lots of suggestions in the report, and no town should or can do it all, but it's great, if nothing else, if it gets this dialogue started, that you have things to figure out and prioritize, what are you going to do, when, how are you going to spend the money, et cetera. So I hope very much that it's useful, it's good to hear that you think it is.
And these, just so, and I hate to be the naysayer, but these numbers are fluid, meaning many could die, and then there's less people, and we have, not 40, but we have 35, or, and so it's always, it's very fluid, and we want to make sure that we keep that in mind, because I'm not so sure that that population of 55 and under are going to stay forever in town. They're the ones that may have kids in school and may end up moving, you know.
But that is...
And that happens everywhere, so...
Right, but that is easy data every year to gather, right, from your town clerk, to find out those numbers, and then to look back and to see how it's moving. Sure, but it is fluid.
Could you make a comment about somebody newly turning 60 today, what the life expectancy is, and what, how has that changed?
So, go ahead.
I apologize, but I was asking is, one of the interesting statistics that we learned about through the process of this study was that what has changed over time is, what is the life expectancy for somebody turning 60 today, a newly turning 60, versus people who were turning 60 a generation or so ago? And so I was just wondering if she might make a comment about that.
Sure, I don't know the exact stats, but once you get to a certain age, you have obviously stronger genes to get you, help you live longer, so people who are making it and who are 60 today are much more likely to live to 85, 90 than they were many years ago. And so, and to your point, though, about people in their 55 to 60, those are the next seniors, they may move, but other people are moving in. So my guess is it's fluid number, but that, and I will be surprised if that number doesn't increase and then stabilize in 2030.
Okay, thank you.
But you're absolutely right.
I'll call you. No, just kidding. Any other questions? No? Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, and really thanks to everyone to help make this report possible.
Thank you, and I would again like to thank the selectmen, and I would also like to give a shout out to Ruth Perrin, who came to so many of our meetings and was, during her tenure on the selectmen, really came to a lot of our meetings, too. So kudos to the entire town for being such great civic-minded folks, and for UMass Boston, I can't thank you, Sue and Caitlin, we are so blessed to have had such a great resource at our fingertips, so thank you all.
Thank you, Anne. Okay, change of glasses. 7:44, so I'm going to go to the next agenda item. Do I have to say this?
Well, so maybe, so this item is about the fact that in the election, nobody ran for the assessor's seat that was coming up, and there were a number of write-ins, and three people, each got three votes as being the top write-in candidates, but that amounts to a failure to elect, because there was no one person with the highest number of votes. When that happens, the remaining members of the board, in this case, the Board of Assessors, convene jointly with the Board of Selectmen to vote in concert concerning a recommendation for someone that could be appointed to that seat until the next town election, which would be a year from now. And so perhaps the two assessors that are here, I think one of them is online, and Tina, you're here, if you could join us at the microphone, and Steve, if you can chime in, if you're there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, so Steve's there. And so generally, when this happens, the group of the five of you in this case need to discuss whether there are names you want to consider for this appointment, and then condense it down to, if there are more than one, if there's more than one name, come to some kind of consensus and then have a vote. In order to appoint the person, it takes a vote of at least three of the five of you to arrive at a name.
So it does not need to be one of the...
It does not. Those, I'm just bringing that up, there were three people that some members of the public expressed might be, you know, they were confident in for being an assessor, but those three names are certainly not the entire universe of names that you could consider, and any name of a resident can be put on the table at this point.
Do either you or Steve have a recommendation, or...
Well, I spoke with the three that got the three votes each, and one of them was already had an appointment, and so he was not interested in serving on the board. The other one, he didn't know that his name was written in, and he thought about it and then decided not to pursue it. And then I spoke with one person, and she was very interested, and I told her of the time commitment and the training commitment, and how you have to know how to use the computer for data entry, and she seemed very interested and willing to serve.
Wonderful. So do they vote here in...
This body of five, if there's a name that is put forward, a motion can be made to nominate that person, someone can second it, then you can have discussion. If there are other names, you could also put other names on the table.
Do the other, Tina, do the other assessors feel the same way as you, that this would be a good person to have on the board?
Actually, I have not talked to the other assessors about it.
Okay. I don't, I'm not really familiar with any of the names closely of the three that tied, so, you know, if Tina has a recommendation, I'd certainly be willing to entertain that.
So the person, should I say your name?
Yes.
The person was Sally Rich, and part of, part of being an assessor, serving on the Board of Assessors is data collecting. So we go around town, driving around town, looking at houses and building permit status and working together, and I said, if she takes the job, she'd be working with me, and she had no objection to it, so, so I like her.
So do we vote to accept her?
Well, somebody, somebody should make, at this point, I don't hear about any other names, so somebody should make a motion to formally nominate Sally Rich, somebody could second it, and then you have a vote, and it takes three of the five to vote in the affirmative.
Again, I can make a motion, but is that for the Board of Selectmen, or you're saying to the...
Right now, it's a group of five, because you're meeting together.
Okay, so it's the two, okay.
Yep.
So I make a motion to accept Sally Rich in the position of the, to consider Sally Rich for the Board of Assessors appointment?
Until the next election.
Until the next election?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Please, yes.
So it's unanimous.
Right.
So Sally, you can come get sworn in by the town clerk in the morning.
Will she have the paperwork? So maybe...
Pam can put it together.
What do you want?
Since it's an elected position, you wouldn't normally make a card, correct? So you can just get sworn in as an elected official directly. And in this case, an appointed official to fill an elected term until the next election. That's it. Now, before the Board of Assessors leaves, there was another matter of business that's on the board's agenda, Madam Chair. It's the personnel board matter. The Board of Assessors wrote a letter to the Board of Selectmen concerning potential augmentation of the existing assessor's clerk position description. And this would be the addition of some skills, and to bring the job up to be an assessing assistant. Right now, that position is a union position. It's part of our AFME labor union, which is a clerical and DPW union. The board needs to consider whether adding skills to what is a clerical position and a clerical union is really the appropriate way to go versus perhaps giving more hours or more responsibility to the part-time assessor that the Board of Assessors currently employs. So those are two ways to go, and depending on which way the discussion goes, I can provide you with more information.
So I'm just gonna give some comments. So our clerk is a full-time clerk currently, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
And it seems like she would like to upscale herself, which I think is lovely, but I just don't know if we, changing the clerk's type of position, I think the clerk for the assessor's office probably has enough work to do to begin with. And I, I know it's touchy, because it is a personnel, but at the same time, you know, the time to take, to get trained and the work, I don't know what all it entails.
Are there other comments, or, because the request is to consider moving forward toward a assessing assistant position. And again, there might be challenges with respect to that, because you would normally put the new skills, knowledge, skills and abilities that come with that in a non-union position, not in a clerical position. And there is an existing subject matter expert that works as a part-time assessor. So that's really the, the two, the two end members that you need to consider.
So, any questions for clarify, because I, it's, it's been going, we've been talking about it a little bit, especially in negotiations. So it's, we've got a clerk in a position who's looking to, I'm gonna say better herself, which is great, but we already do have an assessor, and...
Those responsibilities are already being accomplished, yeah.
Would you agree, Tina, that Dick Karns does all of the things that you're asking to be added to the clerk's job description?
My concern is that the way, the way we are right now, it's kind of a short-term solution. I don't know how long Dick wants to commit to doing what he's doing. It could be a long time, but if he chooses not to, like, or, or go on vacation for a month, it, it could...
And I mean, that's, that's discussing the person that's in the position right now. But in the future, if he gives it up, or decides, you know, he wants to scale back, there would be nothing stopping the assessors from hiring someone else who has that skillset.
Right.
And giving them as many hours as necessary to discharge those, those functions. So it's a, again, for the, for the Personnel Board here, it's a question of whether or not it would be appropriate to add those things that are normally reserved to subject matter experts to a clerk's position. There are no examples of that in any other clerk's position that we have.
So we could upgrade that assessor position to cover those particular...
The assessor position already is expected to do all those things.
It is, okay, yeah.
And I can, I don't wanna muddle the, because we need a clerk, and we need somebody who's gonna be there and not jump out to do assessor roles and then not do clerk roles. So that's why, I, I personally not sure I wanna see them together. That doesn't mean, you know, she can't get this information and maybe use it as a stipend position at a, you know, so that would be off hours. I don't know. That would be something that has to...
Yeah, that's not, that's not possible.
If, if I may, the reason I, why this even came up, the discussion came up, is because when I was, when I was beginning, learning how to go out to sites and things, Dick went on vacation, and, and the other assessor was unable to hold the other end of the tape measure. And I said, Patty, or clerk, you should, why don't you come with me, and you could hold the other end? And it was something as simple as that that brought up this whole discussion as, you know, well, what if we're in a position where, because we do have to go out to job sites, we have to look at, take measurements and get in the field. And if we don't have another person to, to number one, just to interview the owners or to hold the other end of the tape, it's very difficult to do your job. And so that, that's how this whole discussion came about. And so, so we were just thinking, it's so, like, why, why, why not have her help me? So that was...
What about coverage of the office, though, if she starts going out in the field?
No. So it would be, not that she, that would be her job. It would be, she could, if she want, if, if I absolutely needed her to do it.
I think the way I see it is...
Yeah.
I have to remember that it's a small office. It's really an office of, of one person. The assistant assessor that we're talking about is primarily a data collector. So, you know, in a small office, particularly in office one generally, that's there on the day-to-day, is forced to wear multiple hats, and is, it's, you know, Patty's duties are constantly up against, you know, the, the wall between, you know, what are clerk duties and what are assessor's duties. And folks come in and ask questions, and, you know, Patty wants to be able to help, and generally will get into what, I guess, you know, quote-unquote is an assessor duty. And to fully learn the role, you know, to be able to really understand what goes behind the clerking is to know all sides of the house. So it just becomes difficult sometimes, be like, all right, well, you know, you can't do this, or, you know, take part in this because you're a clerk and these are assessor's duties, and we need to have assistant assessor come in. Where the assistant assessor was really, at least in the last nine years or so that I've been on the board, has really just been an as-needed data collector, to help go out and do permits and do sales inspections and things like that. You know, and the role, more as I see it, is somebody who is in the office, understands the day-to-day and operations, and has the, you know, ability and willingness to learn, you know, income models and personal property, and be able to build out the commercial evaluations a little bit more extensively than, than we have in the past, due to, you know, the limited capacity in the office. So that's really, you know, the way, the way I looked at it, but I also understand the difficulties with the union position. And once they become union duties, whether you want to continue to call them clerk's duties or not, is a different story. But you could call them clerical duties and move them in, but once those duties become union work, there's really no way of going back. So you do have to think about that. Because, you know, I agree, you don't wanna, you don't wanna model the, the job after an individual, and, you know, when an estate individual leaves, then, you know, and you can't replace it, those duties are now union work, and it could become difficult to upstep. But Patty, you know, did voice, you know, willingness and desire to learn and expand her role, and the board and myself, you know, were supportive of that. And that's why you have this request before you.
Annie, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So this is, this proposal would be, become a non-clerical?
No, it would be the clerical position being upgraded, but within the union, to something called an assessing assistant, something that doesn't exist within the union today.
Okay.
But then, as, as Steve just said, duties that this person would take on would then become property of the union. And if you wanted to go back the other way, you might have a hard time doing it. Whereas, if you have a part-time assessor that is already paid a higher wage to have the knowledge, skills and abilities, that person could just be asked to work more hours, perhaps on a more regular basis, perhaps if it's 19 hours a week, that person could have known office hours every single day, four, four days a week. And then people could come and get their questions answered anyway. So there is a way to look at it. Like I said, it could, you could do it either way, but I'm not so sure you want to move it down into the union situation.
I agree.
I think it might be difficult, and we don't generally do that.
Expand the union.
Subject matter experts are usually not part of a union.
And it's a timing issue as well. You had noted that usually this doesn't come up at this time, and especially when you're in negotiations, so...
Right. If it was something you wanted to consider further as a Personnel Board, you would do that in the fall, in, in conjunction with the Board of Assessors to perhaps understand what their full proposal is, and then they would have to put the funding package forward to the Finance Committee simultaneously. That would be the right timing, if you have interest in it.
And then I have another question, and this is more general. So what do we do, I mean, in terms of professional development? So say you have this really outstanding employee, and you want that person to grow into that role. What do we offer as an employer for professional development? Do we allow, do we, you know, do we pay for training? Like, what kinds of stuff do we do so that we can kind of grow people into, into roles or nurture the...
We currently do not have anything formal for somebody that would like to perhaps be the next level up in their department. In this case, it's difficult, because this department, the next level up is the assessor. It's, and you've got elected...
Right.
Right. It's, it's a completely different thing, and it's part-time. So, okay, you might shoot for that, but then you're gonna take a part-time job? Probably not. So in a larger organization, that works really well, because there might be multiple levels of people within an office. We have, in most cases, we have a clerk and a subject matter expert.
Right. Okay, that's frustrating. Okay.
And Tina, just to make sure, so we have an assessor and then two assistant assessors, or?
Three elected assessors.
Three elected assessors.
And one part-time...
I was trying to figure that out.
Paid assessor.
Okay.
Paid an hourly wage, whereas the three elected assessors are paid a yearly stipend, which is a, which is a very modest amount of money. So it's something the board could take under advisement and bring up. It's up to you how you want to discuss it.
Yeah, I think we're, and Annie, I know you're brand-new to this, but I, I do think that we don't wanna mix these. I think having a clerk is a clerk. And, and again, if, if the person currently in the position wants to get, you know, get the skills and go on the ballot, I think that would be great. But it shouldn't be part of the union, or we take it out completely if that's what, you know...
You're still gonna need a clerk.
We're still gonna need a clerk.
This would be, you know, you already, like I said, you already have a position, part-time assessor, that can work up to 19 hours a week. Unfortunately, we're set up such that if somebody that's a clerk wants to jump into that, and it's a part-time position, they're not gonna, at least in Essex, they're, they're probably not gonna be interested. Then, you know, do you develop somebody only to know that you're developing them to perhaps go to a place that offers what they want in a full-time basis?
Right.
So that's why it's a difficult situation.
Do we have to take a vote on this, or?
No, only if you were inclined to...
Accept it.
Accept it and say, yes, we wanna move, we want, we wanna move on with this, and potentially agree to a change in the position description. Otherwise, it will sit the way it is now.
Thank you. So we have 8 o'clock, what is my, it's 8:05. The Board of Public Works, do I see them over there?
Looks like you got Wes and Mike.
I'm here as well, on the phone. This is Nick.
Very good.
Who's on the phone?
I have you guys.
Don't be scared.
That's Nick, right? Nick Ellis?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
I apologize, I couldn't be there in person. I had to, I'm traveling for work.
No.
So...
I don't know if, oh, sorry.
Nick is on?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
So the reason that you've asked the Board of Public Works to come in tonight is that there were a number of issues of common concern, and they're listed out on the board's agenda. And if it's okay with, with you, Wesley, who's a member of the Board of Public Works, and with you, Nick, I'll just go through topic by topic, and then we can have a discussion back and forth. I think that's what the board's looking for. So the first topic that we have has to do with the Gloucester Sewer Treatment Plant Upgrade. We all know that Essex owes 3.125% of the annual debt service that Gloucester has to pay to do the, the upgrade. Gloucester is expecting the total debt service per year to be about $9 million, so Essex's portion of that is the 3.125%. And fortunately, we just heard that since Gloucester is taking advantage of the state revolving loan fund, they are not expecting to have to charge Essex anything until fiscal year 2028. That's because they're not going to be expected to go into payback mode until then. So they're not gonna ask us to pay anything until they have to pay something. And the question that looms, and I believe that there was some discussion of it between the two boards earlier, is what are the funding mechanisms? Right now, my understanding is, we have 28% by taxes and 72% by betterment. This is the way the sewer construction project was paid for. So I'll open that topic up for discussion.
So, again, Nick, here, you know, the options that we have are relatively limited as far as paying for this, I would suggest. Brendan, you mentioned betterments. Betterments are an option. It does spread the, the fiscal responsibility a little bit more than, for example, if we just put the debt service on the sewer rate payers. As, you know, to, to, to play the other side of the argument, what we're asking people to do, for example, if you have a sewer stub that you paid a betterment for, however many years ago the sewer originally went in, and you have not connected to the sewer, you are going to once again be paying for a betterment that you are not currently getting beneficial use for. If we put it on the sewer rate for people who are connected to the sewer, then the people who are using the sewer will ultimately be the ones who are paying for Essex's portion of the, the wastewater treatment plant upgrades in Gloucester. That money, and correct me if I'm wrong, Brendan, but I believe the last time we spoke to Gloucester was on, on the order of about $6 million?
Yes, that's correct, over the life of the, of the 20-year loan.
Right. And the intent would be to, to, to get a, to get a loan for 20 years and just pay it back over that time. So, so the question would be whether we do it via a betterment wherein more people are paying for it, or we do it via the sewer rate wherein the people who are discharging to the sewer are ultimately paying for it. So those, those are kind of the options that we had initially discussed.
And do you still favor a portion of it being general taxation, because the town, what happened with sewer construction, anyway, it was 28% taxation because various town facilities benefited from the project. You may or may not think the same way about the secondary treatment, but certain, and I don't know if you do or you don't, but certainly the town parcels would be getting a benefit from it, because they would be staying in compliance as well with the consent decree in Gloucester. So is, is there a thought from the Board of Public Works as to whether you want to see 28% taxation regardless of the way the 72% is paid? way the 72% is paid?
We did discuss that. You know, I can only speak for myself. I feel that the town does receive some benefit from having a sewer, right? Chibaco Lake is cleaner, the Essex River is cleaner. You know, folks who are not necessarily on the sewer are benefiting from the sewer. So it's my opinion that it is reasonable to expect that the town would pay for some portion of this via taxation, whether it's 28% or some other portion. I think, you know, you can certainly debate. But yes, my opinion would be that we would continue to have general taxation pay for at least a portion of it, given that there is, you know, there is benefit to the town ultimately of the sewer.
So can I just ask, as far as, I'm kind of feeling like these financial decisions should be discussed with FinCom?
So here's the thing, right? And I mean, you know, I certainly welcome FinCom's input. At the end of the day, this is sewer enterprise money, with the exception of whatever is spent via taxation. So, yes, I mean, if there is a portion of the money that is going to be from general taxation, then FinCom would certainly, you know, weigh in on that and provide us with some feedback as to what is affordable, what would require an override, hopefully none of it over, you know, a 20-year period. But as far as the sewer rate is concerned, you know, sewer rate setting is based on our yearly cost to operate the sewer system, our yearly cost to maintain the system, and frankly, we should also be planning for future upgrades and replacements of components of the sewer system. That should all be how the sewer rates are set.
So if I understand the betterment, the 2%, which was charged to each person who got the betterment, is actually not something that's being charged? The town has that in a fund?
So when the town borrowed money for the sewer project, we were the, one of the last towns that were able to get the financing at 0% for most of the money, and on some of the loans, we actually had principal forgiveness. So we actually got less than 0% for some of the loans. Yet, in accordance with the law, we charged the rate payers, I'm sorry, the sewer betterment payers, 2%. So that money has been collecting, we refer to it as the Sewer Betterment Interest Surplus Fund. It's not money that we can touch until the debt for the sewer is retired, but that's going to happen in '27, I believe. And once it is retired, it could be used to lower sewer rates or for any capital need of the enterprise. And so it could be used, and we actually have that on as another discussion point, so it's good segue, some of that money could be used to actually lower the amount of money that gets repaid on the secondary treatment question, or, as Nick has suggested, it could just be kept aside just for the needs of, capital needs of the Town of Essex within its own boundaries for the infrastructure.
And that came from the rate payers?
Came from the betterment payers.
Betterment payers.
The betterment payers.
They hooked in or not, correct?
They had to, yes.
That should be benefiting them the most, which would be on upgrades and maintenance or whatever, that money, to some degree, anyway.
Sorry, the maintenance. So I guess I'm thinking, why wouldn't we use that towards, to offset some of the future betterments? If we have to do another betterment, many people have been hoping and praying for '27 to come sooner than later because they were hoping that would fall off, and they would feel like they had got a little relief. And they're not going to get a relief if we're going to go into another betterment.
Right.
Brendan, can I ask you a question? You just made a statement that caught me by surprise a little bit. The $6 million that we're expecting that this is going to cost us, sounded like you were assuming some sort of financing charge to go along with that.
No, because the $9 million a year that Gloucester is charging, it has to pay back a debt service, is inclusive of whatever it costs them to borrow the money. So it's $6 million to the Town of Essex, billed out over 20 years, it's about $300,000 a year. And if it goes by betterments, I believe the law requires the town to charge a certain percentage interest to the betterment payer. Although in this case.
So that the 2% betterments would be in addition to the financing charges that we're already going to be paying.
If we're required to tack money onto the town betterment, yes, it would be. But what I was going to say is, if we research it and we find out that since the city of Gloucester is already incurring charges, is there a way that the town could just simply make its payments and not tack on interest? I will find that out. I guess what we need to know is what the Board of Public Works, and we have time, fortunately, on this.
Sounds like we just picked up an extra year.
We did pick up an extra year because I was going to be approaching everyone this winter, when we prepare for the FY '27 budget, to come up with exactly what you wanted to do. Now there's more time. I think there's a number of ways to do it, but I will get an answer to your question about what we are required to do if a betterment is in play.
Okay, well, I'd like to go on record, similar to Peter, I agree with you. I think that sewer betterment fund.
Surplus?
Yeah, surplus fund would, should pay a healthy chunk of this $6 million if we have to do a small betterment after that, or help, especially the older people, which I'm getting to be one of them on a fixed income. But there is a lot of concern over how much extra, because just in operating costs alone, we're looking at a pretty substantial increase this year in sewer fees. I believe the sewer, we're still discussing it, but we're looking at probably 5%, and then an additional 17% in water fees. So I'm kind of looking at it, and how can we take some of that bite out and see how that money was paid in by the betterment community, so to speak, that they really should be able to retain the benefit of the excess money that they've already.
And that's certainly an option. I think it would be beneficial for the selectmen to eventually get from the Board of Public Works the exact package that you want to do. What is the mix of financing? Is it rate? Is it betterments? Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, so, you know, my concern is this. We have a sewer system that is 20-plus years old at this point. Typically, in very specific pieces of infrastructure such as pump stations, where mechanical equipment is present, this is when things start breaking. And this is where large-scale wholesale replacement of equipment begins to be required. So when we talk about taking the betterment money and using it to offset the cost of the Gloucester wastewater plant, we need to be cognizant of the fact that we are, within the next five to 10 years, also going to internally have large capital outlays required to maintain our own equipment. So while I don't disagree, it could ease the pain a little bit of this cost to work with Gloucester, we also need to keep in mind that we're going to be replacing large pumps, we're going to be replacing electrical equipment, we're going to be replacing instrumentation within our pump stations. God willing, we won't have to do structural work within these pump stations. They're not that old, so we shouldn't. But the reality of the situation is, large sewage pumps are not cheap. They cost on the order of hundreds of thousands of dollars if they're big enough. And that's something that we're going to have to pay for in the next five to 10 years. So, yes, we could ease the pain of the $6 million with the betterment, but ultimately, the reality of the situation is we are going to have capital outlays in our future that it would be good to have some reserve funding on hand so that we don't have large shocks, that we have to either put on the rate payers or go and get loans that are not low-interest or zero-interest loans.
So that's why I was saying, I think it would be important for the Board of Public Works in the next, you know, ensuing time period here, to come to a consensus view on what you're going to recommend. I think that's really the next step, is for the three people to formulate a package for the selectmen. What are the funding sources you want to use? How much of the interest surplus, if any, do you want to use? Whatever the package is, I think you should arrive at that, come to the selectmen, and then have the selectmen ask other questions and such.
Yeah, I agree.
Sure. And I want to take this opportunity, Brendan, just to, I don't know, you know, how many people are in attendance at this meeting, but I think it's important that, you know, we don't make this decision in a vacuum, right? It's important for us to get input from the people who are going to wind up paying for this, particularly the folks who may be charged for a betterment. You know, I hear Wes, Wes is one of those, one of those people who's ultimately going to have to pay for a betterment, and he has one opinion. But other people who may have to pay for a betterment or pay a higher sewer rate, et cetera, might have a different opinion. So I'm interested in input from people. I'm not sure what is the best way to get that. I don't by any means think that my idea is the best idea, but, you know, it's important that we make the right decision here because it is a lot of money, and it's going to be something that has implications for a long time for the Town of Essex.
So Brendan, can I just ask, is this something that a public forum would be important? I mean, because we've got three board members, and all of us, I believe, are on sewer, or had the betterment, so.
Yes, it's certainly something that could be pulled together, and you could have the three selectmen and the three Board of Public Works members come in and put out on the table, here are all the options. Here's how it could be pieced together, and start to take that kind of feedback, because that might help inform ultimately what the Board of Public Works recommends.
Yeah, because I know it's difficult, and like I said, I've talked to a lot of people, and, you know, when I start to approach the subject that the betterment may not go away, they're like, what? So, and then I've also talked to some people who have septic, and they're like, well, I don't want to pay for it. So it's really something that I do believe a public forum is important.
All right, well, sorry, Annie, go ahead.
Can we go back to some Water Sewer 101? Can you explain what a second, explain what the secondary is?
So the city of Gloucester is, I believe, the last plant on the East Coast that only employs what's called primary treatment, which means they basically settle the waste so that the solids settle out, they chlorinate it, and it goes offshore, the liquid portion. That is the most rudimentary method of treatment. All other plants are at least secondary treatment, which has a much more sophisticated cleanup of the waste stream before it goes out into the ocean, the river, in this case, the ocean, but wherever that plant is discharging to.
Can I just say, and Annie, this has been going on for 40 years, I believe.
So Gloucester kept getting.
Think about that when I swim.
It's way offshore now. It used to be right in the harbor. But Gloucester kept getting waivers from the federal government for being allowed to continue with discharge of primary-treated effluent. That finally ran out. They are under a very constrained timeline now to get the work done. They're going to get it done, and it's going to be $9 million a year in debt service. The total of that to Essex over 20 years is about $6 million.
And I know at one point, Molten was doing, was thinking about a regional effort, and that died. Is that, is there no hope at all for that?
Yes. Peter and I were in that meeting, and it went nowhere from that meeting forward.
Is it really dead, then?
Yeah, too many, too many side issues that keep it from going.
Too many side issues and not enough money, I think it's important to note, right? The idea of regionalization is a good idea. It just costs a lot of money.
And Gloucester was going to open up neighborhoods that are currently not sewered, and that becomes a development concern.
Okay. One other question. Nick, you and I talked a few weeks ago, and you had mentioned something called a rate study. Is that still something that we should be, is that, should that be part of the plan that you're kind of developing? And just wanted to kind of go into some of that.
Yeah, I think, I think that long-term for water and sewer, it is a good idea to have some form of a rate study. I would say I'm a little, I'm a little bit hesitant to say we should do it right now, because what's important in a rate study is making sure that we have all of the pertinent information to make that rate study informative and effective. So, you know, I don't know. I mean, I'd have to sit down with Mike and Mandy and folks to just see what we've got for information, because ultimately, what a rate study should include is not only, you know, how much we pay to the city of Gloucester for sewer rates, but also how often we're placing pumps, how often we're dealing with pipe breaks, how often we're having to buy trucks for the sewer department, how much it costs us to employ the people who work in the sewer department. All of that stuff needs to be included in a rate study. And if we go and hire someone to do a rate study and we don't have that information to share, it's not going to be all that valuable.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? Sorry. Are we tracking the data now? I mean, so do we, are we, I guess what I'm hearing you say is that we don't have the data, so we can't really do a study because we wouldn't really have reliable data, or are we starting to, have we started to collect that now so that we have something of substance?
I think we, I think we have some of the data.
Yeah.
Annie, I think, I don't have a grasp on how much we do have versus, you know, what we need at the moment. I think, you know, over the next six months or so, I'd really like to kind of understand what we do have, and then also understand where we're lacking and try and fill in some of the blanks. I mean, frankly, we could do our own internal sort of rudimentary rate study, right? That doesn't get into net present value and inflation and everything else, to just get a baseline to figure out, you know, where rates should be, how often we should be raising them, how much we should be raising them, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you.
So having an idea, Nick, as far as six months, I think that that's good for us to start thinking. We're talking 2028, that we would.
Fiscal 2028.
So, I mean, that's two years away, and, you know, we should get things in order before then so that both the public is aware and nobody's shocked.
If we didn't get that extra year, we would be talking about the real plan right now.
Right.
Leading into the fall.
So we've had some of those conversations internally from a budgeting perspective. We are collecting information. You know, the challenge is, we have our line item budget, but then we also have items that we go to town meeting for, you know, over the years, whether it's a truck, a piece of equipment, transferring money to buy pumps, et cetera. So kind of trying to get all of that information in one place is where we're at at this point.
Anything else on that? Because there's a number of things to get to. The next issue that we listed is the potential disposal of surplus street excavation materials. There's a pile of accumulated street excavation materials, which normally are not put back into a trench. They're not suitable, so they're stockpiled. And that pile, I guess the first question to answer is, does that pile need to be disposed of at a special facility, or does it not? Because I've heard, I've heard it either way.
Yeah, so Brendan, to answer your question, I had the town's engineer that oversees the transfer station. He also does the gas monitoring there, and he also does the inspections for the landfill. And it's his understanding, he did all the sampling, we collected samples, sent it out, and he said that it does have to be properly disposed.
Okay, so if that's the case, the question then becomes, you know, what's the plan for that? I guess the board wanted to have a discussion with the Board of Public Works on what's the thinking there, what's the time horizon, what's the cost, because it would seem that we should take what is, has accumulated over time and start making ground on properly disposing of it.
And whether or not, you know, if we have some sense of what the pricing would be, if we do.
What I've got here is from February of this year. It had a, out to Mike. Is it Michael Roskowski?
He's the engineer.
Yeah.
That's, okay.
So Brendan, I believe that you have all the numbers.
I have a copy of it, what you gave me, is $60 per ton. Does that mean $60 to dispose of the ton, or is that $60 including trucking and disposal?
If you look a little further along, and that is a demurrage rate charged at $135 an hour, I think that's going to include most of the trucking costs.
How many tons are there? Any estimate? How many tons are there? Is there an estimate?
We haven't estimated that yet.
The demurrage is if the, if the, if the handler has to wait. if the handler has to wait to be loaded or unloaded on the other end, I think that's where demurrage comes in. There's an allowance for, let's say it's a, let's say it's a, a perfect trip. A perfect trip is the truck pulls in, he gets fully loaded, he drives away, and when he gets there, he can dump right away. But if the truck pulls in at your facility and has to wait 30 minutes before we're ready to load him and then he goes to the other end and has to wait an hour, that's an hour and a half demurrage. I'm trying to understand, and Mike, maybe you know, when we say $60 per ton, is that, the, the disposal facility charges that to dispose of a ton? Or is that inclusive of the trucking to get it there?
Yeah, I understand your question. I don't believe that he put that in there and he also didn't give you an estimate on the amount of tons. He, I don't think he was committing to that.
So I wonder on this issue, is he willing to go and provide to us the, kind of the missing information? Is that something he could do so we have a better idea of it?
So I think he will if I ask him. I just think that there's going to be a dollar amount attached to it. Because it's going to take some effort on his part.
Okay, so, all right. So I guess that's the next question. I mean, to, to the Board of Public Works, you are interested in disposing of it, correct?
At least a good portion of it.
Okay.
And so, looking at the pile, do you have an estimate of how many tons is there or no?
No.
How long has it been there?
It's been there since before I started working here.
So that, that pile is 30 years old?
It's, it started out with spoils from the street and I'm pretty sure that some of the spoils that ended up in the, from the foundation of the highway garage ended up in there too. So it's just accumulated over time, but we always dumped spoils down the high, down the landfill.
Is it something that you would, all right, let's put it, let's rephrase it. Can you get this engineer to give you an estimate of what it would be to prepare a comprehensive, um, look at this? Like, what's it going to cost? How much is there? Because that's something that could be considered for funding at the Fall Town Meeting, for example.
Yeah, so I'm pretty sure he'd commit to that.
And he could give you a cost of what that would be and then we could get it funded. Does that sound like a good idea? I mean, you've got to know what you're dealing with.
Right.
Actual transportation costs may vary with who's going to haul it.
We're looking, I think we're looking to get in the ballpark, right? So we need to know how many tons we have. We need to know, we need to know what the cost per ton to dump it is and then whatever trucking costs are associated.
Generally, yeah.
Need to be, need to be in the correct order of magnitude so that we can either fund it somehow or, or go and ask for, for money a ton.
But to get the engineer to kind of get you that order of magnitude number and, and analysis, I doubt it's going to be, it's probably in the low tens of thousands for a study like that. So is it something that, between the Board of Public Works and the selectmen, do you want me to carry that on the list of possible topics for the Fall Town Meeting?
I, I do. I, I think that we've been hearing that they want the pile moved.
Depending on how much it's going to cost.
Well, even if we only do two tons, I mean, if we could get a portion of it moved.
Two, two tons isn't going to do much.
I know, I know that.
I mean, if we could say get a third of the pile and move the whole fueling station off of the sewer line and further back, that would be a benefit. If we can get the whole thing, obviously it would be great.
So now we're going to, the, the length conversation, I think, let's talk about dirt for now. Yes, we would like to get rid of the dirt. The right way to get rid of the dirt is to just get rid of all of it at once rather than pieces. You know, there's some economies of scale there, mobilization, et cetera. If we're going to do it, we should just do it. That being said, yes, we don't have a solid estimate right now, so I don't think that, you know, the first step to your point, Brendan, is to, is to, is to get a number to do an estimate, which I don't think should be that much, and then get a solid estimate and then we can figure out what we want to do.
All right, so moving to what was just brought up now, the, the construction and use of the municipal field depot. Right now, as the Board of Public Works knows, we did go out in the field. We did identify a particular area. Lines have been painted. And the selectmen tonight are going to consider tasking our engineer with the next phase of work. That's going to include another site visit with every stakeholder onsite, pointing out locations, pointing out the orientation that is currently suggested, et cetera. And then it will include the preparation of bid-ready documents and, and assistance with the bidding and then eventually assistance with oversight during construction. And so I think it's extremely important before the Board of Selectmen tonight pull the trigger on the next phase of engineering work, that there is agreement that the area that we've identified on the ground is in fact the area that we're looking to cite the fuel depot at. Do we have agreement from the Board of Public Works?
I know. I'm not happy with it putting it. I'd like to get it moved back, which is why I'd like to see a dirt pile dealt with. I'm not 100% sure where Nick is, but I think he would also.
I, I would say that if we can build it such that the fuel storage tank and pumping facility is not on top of the sewer line, that would be ideal. I appreciate that we might have to do it such that the, that fueling, uh, pad and secondary pseudo-containment area is on top of the sewage line. If that's the case, that doesn't really bother me that much.
We could do it without any element of it being on top of the sewer line. So it's not going to be toward the old landfill side of the sewer line.
If the location that you showed, yeah, if the location that, I, I was trying to decipher from what you had sent the last time where exactly it was and I couldn't, and I apologize that I couldn't be out there while you guys were digging the hole and painting.
It's basically in the area-
If it's not on top of the sewer line?
It's not. It's, but it's to the, it's to the landing roadside of the sewer line. It is not to the old landfill site, side of the sewer line.
Yeah.
It'll be two, even the apron itself will be two feet removed from the sewer line.
So, so even the area where the trucks are going to drive and park on a concrete pad is not on top of the sewer line?
The pad itself will not be. No, it will not be. None of it.
Yeah, no, I have no issue with that location.
Wasn't there some, uh, concern about having to, um, relocate the transfer or the, um, recycling facilities?
Not the recycling, it's the bins for donated materials.
Okay, oh, all right, okay.
Um, Annie, did you have a question?
Yeah, is there any way that we can just pull up so that everyone has the same understanding of where this goes? I, I'm not-
I can, I can pull it up on, on there and turn this back on if that's, if that's helpful. Hold on.
It would be helpful for me. Because you had a question about where it was placed.
Well, the dirt pile's in the way.
Where I'd like to put it, the dirt piles in the way.
Vehicles drive around, they're not driving on the pad, right? It's just the, the fuel. Oh, they are on the pad. Okay, I wasn't sure. Got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought that was all yard waste. It's not?
It, it's all stuff from-
Just stuff?
Yeah. Everything. Wondering if I have a, like, the, the map I have that isn't really great if I have one.
Sorry, Brendan.
I don't think I have it. Looks better a couple of years ago.
I've got a whole set of pictures. I'm just trying to figure out where, where I put them.
Was it in the attachment that you sent me the other day?
No.
Annie, I got a hard copy set if you want to take a look at them.
Is that okay? Sorry that I made you. Can you just show me?
Basically, this is where the-
Recycling-
Is it from, um, 1019?
No, it was after that.
This is the old barn. Long in here is the, uh-
All the stuff.
All the stuff. They cleaned this portion out now and it's been rearranged. So there's little huts over here.
Yep.
And the TVs and stuff.
Right.
Over here. Those are going to have to get cleaned out. The idea would be slide it out. It's due to me. Come on here.
Where you want it?
5:15 I have a draft drawn. 5:15 I have an email with the draft drawn. Is that, oh, that's for the actual-
Photos, photos, and I can't place it.
And is, that's what you, that's what you have drawn that I can-
That's what we'd like to do, yeah. The idea is, is what he wants to do is get rid of the whole pile.
Yeah.
If we're going to do it, get rid of it.
Okay.
That's like-
So did you see where he's pointing, like right around here?
Yeah, yeah.
Were you saying the same thing? Okay.
It's the hill.
Getting rid of the whole pile and putting it in there is going to delay everything here. If we don't care. Well, we're not going to get the money to, to deal with the pile until at least the fall. And then you're not going to do anything until the next spring.
But to be honest with you, myself, I'd rather hold off till spring and do it right the first time rather than that fast.
Yeah.
That's my opinion.
Why don't you talk about the next thing? Because I am going to find it. I think it would be-
So the next thing I have, well, you have the fuel depot and then the next thing we have is, um, I see-
The Kenoma Point.
Kenoma Point, reusing of the, um, recycled asphalt.
So Mike, maybe you can go into that. One person asked about it, but we asked whether your, the department is willing to do it everywhere on the road. Yeah, so right now, we have one of your leaseholders down there that's complaining about a portion of his yard that the traffic moves over and has basically made a rut. So I basically sent out an email today and Brendan was attached to it, basically saying that, you know, as soon as I can get some summer help and we're not doing all the mowing and stuff, I would attempt to do that first. Going by the email, the original email that was sent out, I'm actually not looking for like a lengthy project that lasts all summer doing all the edges of the roads. I mean, they were all done when it got huttopped down there. And chances are, I mean, I could be doing that every day all over town. So there's just, there's not enough manpower, so I'm just, I'm willing to keep the leaseholder, um, happy and just solve his problem and then as seen fit, if there's other areas, we would address them. But I'm not looking for any lengthy projects.
Are you afraid that you'll see a lot of people who see fit after they see?
And it's possible. It happens all the time with trees. I mean, I get one or two people that complain about trees and then I get 20 people that complain.
That's why the board was asking when it last came up whether or not the department would be able to do it for everyone. Because if you do it for one and not everyone else, it's really a matter for the, for the Board of Public Works.
Yeah, I think we would just handle it one case at a time and just see what, what comes out of it.
But you're not against if someone else had the same request?
Not at all.
So is that, is that a fine solution for the selectmen?
I guess that one of the things that I would want is if you had gone and taken a look, is that the worst location? Or is there another property that's in the, you know, because I wouldn't want to just do it because somebody complained. I'd want to do it because, hey, this one over here is even worse. We should do this before we do that one. That's, that would be my only-
No, I, I saw the complaint, but I did tell the person that they had to basically go to Brendan because you guys oversee Kenoma Point, so, um, he followed the proper channels. It's just a matter of getting it done.
So is the board opposed to them doing it case by case? So it sounds like-
No, I have no issue.
If they're, if they're okay with it.
They, well, that's what they just said. So, okay, so Annie, here is the overview, okay? Here's the landing road coming in. Here's where you, uh, where the compactor is. Here, this, this little shed is the blue shed where the hazardous things like batteries and things go in. It's a little blue shed and against this building are all the bins for donation collections. The sewer line comes out of the DPW barn, which is way over here, and goes on a certain angle. Now, this is not exact. It's diagrammatic. And then it makes a turn and goes out to join the sewer line in, in the road. So what we're saying is it can be, it could be anywhere this side of the sewer line. The dirt pile is right here. Okay? And the question is if you put the pad, this red box, over here, you're going to have to clear away some of this. Plus, you're also having trucks go farther out in, onto a dirt road, et cetera. Um, let me just show you some, some other pictures. There's the little blue shed. There's the waste collection, the, um, donation collection boxes. This rectangle here is where the pad would be and, uh, it would include the place where the tank is and then at this hash mark, that would be where the concrete apron would be, where you pull up on. Do you see this line here going off into the foreground? That is the actual sewer line. So we can go anywhere to the landing roadside of this line right here. And it can be moved over to stay off of that. And the question is when we go out in the field, I'll go back up to this one. If you move this corner over here, that means the top corner is going to cock and go over the sewer line. So the more you rotate it for convenience of, of, um, approach by a vehicle, the more you have to determine where it fits without hitting the sewer line in any particular. And that's why the, the next phase of work is going to start with a site visit. Here is the, uh, the dirt pile. This edge of this, of the pad right now would be right here, uh, at this, this corner. Right now, you can drive between the edge of the pad and in this area out towards the DPW barn. There's a road that goes all the way through. This just shows how we found the sewer line and its orientation. That's the type of soil that was in there so that our engineers could do the correct load-bearing measurements. But that's really it right there. Is there, do you have other questions now? You can visualize it.
No, but I, I guess I would just like them to speak to where, I mean, what you guys are saying is you'd rather move it over where that dirt pile is.
That way we can leave all of the little boxes in, in an appropriated area. If we put the thing where it is now, the, the rest of the, uh, collection recycling stuff is going to have to go somewhere else, which is probably further out back by the time we get done. I'd rather see us move the whole fuel depot into the hill.
Is there a cost differential to moving it from where it is now to where you want it to be? Like, do you have to move? I'm just throwing some stuff around. Like, the dirt pile is a cost, right?
Yes. That would be the worst of it that I can think of right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, the, you have flat ground, okay, on either side, so the, the construction of it on one side or the other, the sewer line would be the same. Except that a corner of it's going to hit the dirt pile and now you're into partial removal of the pile. Or if the preference is to do full removal of the pile, now you've got to do that cost before you even get into it and you're going to delay the project, which is escalating at 10 to 15% a year.
Um, and can I just confirm that, um, the, will there be a fence around the pad also? Meaning taking up even more space?
There will not be a fence because the area itself has a fence around it. There will be bollards preventing vehicles from hitting the tank.
And I'm only asking that because sometimes it can get pretty crowded there and a lot of confusion at recycling. I'm usually dumping stuff in the brush pile and then laughing and going home, but I, I know that it can get kind of hectic.
So we want to not allow it the best we could.
So, do we wanna not allow, at the best we could, any refueling during times when the...
I would say that that would be a great policy unless there was an emergency, and I think that's very doable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Before hours, after hours, days that they're not open, you know? Uh, except for police cars, they can cruise right in, get their gas and go out, it's not an impact. So, my, my crucial question though, since the board is gonna consider whether to kick off the next phase tonight, is do we have agreement on where this is going? 'Cause if we don't, I wouldn't recommend you kick it off, but then we're delaying the, the whole situation.
I, I wanna defer to the folks who are the experts.
And can I also ask, is Christian still out there? I mean, 'cause it's important, were we trying to get it done before next winter, and if so...
I hope so, you're not gonna have enough money. It's gonna escalate.
Right. So, that's another thing.
The point was to get the money, get the design done, go out to bid, get it in the ground before the snow flies, yes.
So, what do you guys think about getting it in there quickly at a cost that we have the funding for versus spending a lot of money to move the pile?
I understand the cost, and as a taxpayer, I'm deeply concerned about it.
I, I can only, I can only speak for myself here, folks, I have no issue with the location as shown. I think that we can come up with a way to relocate the recycling bins such that they are accessible and people can get to them without it being that big of a deal. Do we need to deal with the dirt pile ultimately? Yes, we do. Do we need to deal with the dirt pile to facilitate the installation of this fuel depot? No, we do not. So, would, if we had, if, in a perfect world, if we could do everything that we wanted to do and we had all kinds of money, would we move the dirt pile and maybe relocate this thing? Yeah, possibly. But frankly, I don't see that the downside of putting it where we're showing it now is so big that we should delay this project and spend a couple hundred grand moving a dirt pile to facilitate it.
And a key consideration is, when this gets kicked off, we cannot go out in the field and have an argument over whether the location is gonna be different. It's just not gonna work, so we all have to figure that out right now.
I'm not, I, I, so I think the location crowds us, and I wish the pile wasn't there, but it is, and so I'm okay with it staying in the location that you've, um, etched out, and we'll just blame you when people complain.
There's a reason why we're doing what we're doing and putting it where it is.
It's okay, sure.
You know, I mean, there's a good reason why we're, we're putting it where it is and doing what we're doing now as opposed to moving the dirt, dirt pile and a few other things, so, you know, as long as, uh, the DPW is okay with, with that, then I think that we should go along with it.
We'll, we'll figure out how to deal with it, I would just prefer to have...
Yeah.
Some real estate recovery.
Perfect for it, yeah.
Um, so, I, I don't see, I don't think there's anything else, I didn't miss anything, right? Streets are plus we talked about, and then the recycling at Kenomo Point, the...
Right, unless there was anything else that either a member of the Board of Public Works or a member of the Board of Selectmen had that's not listed here.
The Betterment, we covered that.
The only thing I would like to just briefly bring up from a conversation earlier tonight, we've already discussed pickleball, and we want nothing to do with pickleball down back.
Pickleball rears its ugly head.
At the landing?
Pickleball can go up to, up to...
At the landing, on the dirt pile.
Since then you'll grow it if you want.
I'm fine, my hearing's going away, so I, it would be okay. Okay, um, so, easy, that, um, as far as the DPW, thank you for coming in, this has been very, um, informative and also scary, um...
We should maybe do this...
We don't wanna scare people.
Well, I think that if not...
Or every, whatever.
Yeah. Did you have anything additional, Brendan, to bring up? Or do we go right into voting for that from your item?
Which?
Fuel depot.
The fuel depot design process.
Oh, okay, I was gonna start at the top of my report, unless you want to start with that one, that's fine.
Well, I just feel...
Yeah, okay, we're there, yeah, so hold on, let me switch to that.
Thank you, I think you're all set, right? We're not gonna need them for this process?
No.
Thank you, folks.
Have a great night, thank you, Snack, for joining.
Okay, so Web Engineering is the engineering firm that we're working with. Um, there will need to be additional services, including finalization of plans and specs, uh, prepar, assistance with preparation of the bid package, and then engineering just during construction. That next scope of work will be $11,000, but since we did really well with Web Engineering with the first part of the scope of work where we had $25,000 put aside for design, we still have 9,500 left. Uh, so, 9,500 of the 11,000 will come from that appropriation and won't even hit, only a small amount of it will hit the new appropriation, which was around $400,000, and that was inclusive of all costs, extra design, engineering during construction, et cetera. Um, I would also recommend, since we did so well, there's something called a Federal Spill Prevention Control and Countermeasure Plan. We have to have one because we're over a certain number of gallons. We don't have to have an engineer prepare it because we're not up to a certain number of gallons, but we don't have anyone on staff that knows how to do one. My recommendation is to pay $3,000 extra, which would make the total $14,000, and that gets you all the way through construction, by the way, so the, the spill plan can be done properly. Um, that's my recommendation, would be 11 plus 3 for the 14,000.
Do you think, you know, I mean, it seems like it's probably pretty basic, the spill plan. Do you think that anybody could like cut and paste and just...
Well, they want, they've, they've also indicated that we need to do one for the DPW barn itself too, because there are fuels, even if in small quantities.
Right.
And it's starting to get a little bit more site and case-specific.
Yeah.
And I would say, since we did so well so far, I would, I would get the professional to do it because they're used to doing it.
Um, so I had that question similar, um, as far as like, we have neighbors that have a fuel depot already. I think Manchester and Hamilton, or Wenham. Um, you know, I was asking the same thing, do we already have that? And then, but you said, like, I get it, the whole area should be done, correct?
Properly, yeah, because it's, it's site-specific and we're way ahead of the game, so...
And that's something you just do once.
You do it once, and we can then be, we can know that it was done correctly, we didn't guess at some of the elements.
Right.
So, um, having, I just wanna make sure, do we need to add here that we make sure that these engineers are licensed engineers, up to date?
These, this firm is, yeah.
Okay, I'm just asking, 'cause we've had situations on the school...
What was that guy's name? Yeah, right. The guy from the building committee that didn't have the certification, or he was stamping stuff, remember that?
Great.
Yeah.
So, these guys, Web is gonna manage the project all the way through?
Correct.
Yeah. It's nice, so you don't have to do it.
I'll still be there, trust me. Okay, so what is the board's pleasure, do you wanna go for the 11 and 3?
Whatever that extra safeguard is, I have, I should go for. So, do you want a motion to approve 13,000?
Uh, 14,000, it's 11 plus 3.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi. Making it easy for you.
Okay.
Okay, so now, back to your, rest of your report.
Yes, so, the first item on my report has to do with the Centennial Grove regulations. We have the rates that potentially should be charged, that's a, that's a revision of the rate schedule that's been recommended by the Economic Development Committee. We have, uh, so those rates would be incorporated into the Grove regulations, which you have a copy of the way they exist today. In addition, the board was discussing putting some language in there about fire safety, which I now have from the Fire Department and the Fire Chief, uh, calling out that, um, the Grove cannot be used by others when Camp Dory is in session, which is from 9 to 1 in the summer when Camp, uh, on, during weekdays. Uh, then there was discussion about whether a police detail should be required when an event at the Grove occurs, and the police chief got back to me and said, "If it's anywhere but in the cottage, yes, the police detail should be required." Even if it's in the cottage, it should be case by case. So, the Board of Selectmen finds out that a wedding shower is going on, or a baby shower in the cottage, maybe you'd say no police detail to that, but if it's somebody's 21st birthday in the cottage, then perhaps you need the police detail. So, um, that is his recommendation there. So, the question is, which of these things do you wanna start talking about first? The rates, I guess, whether you wanna institute those?
And these were ones that came from the Finance Committee?
From the Economic Development Committee that studied it, yep.
And then, as far as the rates, I'm, I'm fine with them, and we'll see what happens. Um, I, I don't know what the others, I mean, excuse me. Peter and I have seen these before, we, I think this is the third time this iteration has come in. Did you have any questions, Annie?
Nope.
I'm just wondering if there should be a tiered approach depending on the size of the event? Especially if you're gonna have to have a police detail for most of these, then there's gonna be somebody up there that can say, "No, there was 50 people, not 25," or whatever.
Do you care about that number, or do you, I, I mean, I was looking at the 199, or the 150 versus 300, or something?
Well, those are huge.
Right, so I mean, in that case, if you were having a very large gathering, you would want, I would think, more than one cop, yeah?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But that, I didn't know if that had to be defined in this list, or in this, this document?
But somewhere I saw that...
Well, the regulations already talk about a police detail perhaps being required, and you could revise the regulations to say that, except in cases where it's contained within the cottage at the discretion of the Board of Selectmen, 'cause each application comes to you and you get to say this or that about it and approve it. They're not approved just in the office.
And usually the request comes to us saying, and if it doesn't say how many people, we ask them, we usually send it back and say, "How many?"
Well, everyone will come to us.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, Pam, that's what we generally do, right?
Yeah.
Um, I did have a question, sorry, Anne. So, the extra fees where you had, so the one-day entertainment license, shouldn't that be indoors at this point? 'Cause we do not have an outdoor, it would have to be a special request?
Well, that would be the price of it if you in fact were successful in getting it outdoors. Like, for instance, we used to do the Essex Music Festival, if they were gonna do that again, it would be outdoors, and you would, on a case-by-case basis, so it's saying, if you, if you're actually gonna be approved for entertainment, here's the cost of the... So, it sounds like you're okay with the, the fees. The police detail, are you okay with, if it's outdoors, yes, if it's in the cottage, discretion of the board? Fire safety language I've already got put aside, Camp Dory statement I have put aside.
Yeah, I mean, it's really a work in progress, I think. We can change these.
Yeah, but we could start with this.
Yeah.
And I could bring it to you the next meeting.
The only comment I have is a number four, um, point C, uh, point four C. It says Essex license in board office at least 14 days in advance of any event, and I'm just wondering, should that be 30? One-day wine and malt.
Yeah, in our entertainment regulations, we say 30. This, this has been in here for a long time, but we could easily change that.
I'm just saying, it, it contradicts what we have elsewhere.
I think, I think it's a good point, why not?
Um, as far as certificate of liability, is that based on a number of hours, or is it based on an event?
If you're serving liquor, you have to have the one-day policy. That's our thing.
Oh, that is ours?
Yep, because you can, you can technically serve alcohol without a liability insurance policy, but since it's town property, we're requiring them to get it.
So, on the, the time slots, you know, it's 9 to 2, then 4 to 9.
That doesn't mean they have them those whole hours, right? That means they...
No, but we could shift it, if somebody, so between 2 and 4, nothing's hap, nothing can happen according to this, but we can allow, if somebody wants to come in at 2 and go to 7, um, if there's nothing going on.
You could publish, you could publish the way it is there and say, "Special request may be considered by the board." I could do that.
Um, as far as, you know, the detail, the police detail, I, I know it's steep, but I, I will take the recommendation of the police chief because...
He was very firm about it, too.
Kinda have to, yeah. What was it, 250?
Or across around 4-something for, for a whole day.
For a whole day, yeah.
Yeah.
250, 200 or 250 for...
For a 4-hour.
Yeah.
And, um, so can I ask some questions about that? So, the police detail, um, is like just keeping order, is that, and...
I think it's if they have alcohol.
When there's alcohol.
Yeah.
Right.
Not, not...
It's more concerned about if you have a party with alcohol and the lake is there and somebody drowns?
Not just the lake, it's a wooded area, and somebody could wander off, and there's nobody really watching it, especially if all the guests are enjoying the alcohol.
I, I'm asking because we just, I just did an event the other night in Groveland. They require a police officer, but the police officer wasn't necessarily monitoring any guests. I mean, I just wanna, I just wanna know, what is the response?
I can tell you that our chief wants the police officer there to be actively scoping the scene and understanding issues.
That's what I would want.
Yep.
Um, so I'm looking at, uh, number 2 under general use. Are we gonna issue tags for, um, for guests? So, say you're having a party, I'm gonna have 50 people, probably 30 cars. Are you gonna get a piece of paper that you can put in the windshield that says...
Yes, Pam already does that.
Oh, perfect, thank you, Pam. Um, and I'm sorry to ask these dumb questions, but wine and malt, it's only beer and wine, there is no full alcohol, if you wanted to have a full bar, no?
I think you only give wine and malt. One-day alcohol is a wine and malt, I, I'm not aware of one that allows full...
And again, it might be something, I mean, I know there's, there's trucks now that are doing these types of things, so maybe, you know, if, if we got asked, we'd have to make a decision.
If the licensing was really there, I mean, if, if they were allowed to do it.
Okay. Just under number 5, it said something about Grove facilities cannot accommodate groups of 300 or more. That's, seems like a lot, and I just wondered if you were going with 300, is that, is that by default you're doing pavilion plus ballpark? Like, 300 people around the pavilion is significant. Like, I just wonder, like, is that site-specific to the numbers?
It would be at the picnic area pavilion itself, I would say. I don't think you'd want 300 in, on the cottage property, no.
Oh, God, no, but I mean, even 300 at the pavilion is a lot, I think.
Well, it would include where the basketball court is.
Yeah, the whole, the whole area, I mean, when they used to do music festivals, there were more than 300 people.
Right, okay.
Sometimes people rent tents, put the tents up, so that's possibly, if they had a wedding or something, they could have 300 people.
Okay. And then the, the numbers will be updated in this form to agree with the schedule that you provided?
That's correct.
And, um, is there any onsite personnel? That was the other thing that came up the other night, there was nobody there that was the, um, the site person?
We have the ability to pay someone $75 per event, which we haven't used in a long time, to, to open up, set up, and then maybe close anything down that needs to be done at the end of it, and maybe help instruct people at the very beginning, and then come back and instruct them at the end.
Yeah.
That's all we have built into the possibilities right now, and again, we haven't even used that, because in, in recent years, events have really dropped off because we don't have flush toilets and all that, but that's coming, and we see, uh, probably gonna need, have a need for someone to come in, make sure everything is open the way it should be, and then make sure everything was put back while, while the group is still there, you know?
Yeah, and just the only thing that, um, as somebody who comes into a site, that I appreciate is someone shutting the bar down because, um, there are regulations about that. I have, you know, we carry the liquor license, so we shut it down, but also like the, where the alcohol goes and the access that the, you know, we have no further liability once those folks take, you know what I mean?
We don't, because they're getting, they're getting their own liquor liability policy.
Yeah.
Yes.
And what is the liquor, um, what is the... And what is the liquor, what is the hours for a bar under the malt license? Is it four hours?
Well, for a one-day event, it's, there's no, there's no limitation. If you're an establishment, there are defined hours. But if it's a one-day event, when, the limitation is what's listed on the application. So if you see an application and it's serving alcohol for 12 hours, you might say, we're not gonna do that, we'll give you four.
Okay, so you do that under the license?
Right. That's right.
Thank you.
The only other thing I had on this list was guest parking, and I think we covered that.
Yeah.
So, oh, that's what it was. This was actually a different form of guest parking. Right now, we are allowed, people are allowed, Essex residents, to have a guest with them as long as they are there. That guest could pull up in a vehicle of their own. Do you want to look at that, or do you want, at this point in time, Essex residents to bring their guests with them in the vehicle that has the sticker on it?
I think it would be easier, I think it would be easier for the police if they brought them with them, or come in to get a temporary pass to use for the day.
We don't have that anymore. No, because it's a residence-only area. So the only reason, the only way you don't have to be a resident is if you're at a sports game, you've rented the place, or you're a camp participant. You can also be a guest of someone, a resident, who has access during regular general hours. And those are all spelled out on the regulation, on the sign and everything.
When is it, I mean, I saw there was a memo from the police chief about traffic enforcement, or parking enforcement. You know, there are times that it's more flexible, and times that it's, do you know what I mean? Like, you don't want to be jerks.
They can use their discretion.
Yeah.
So what was happening in, for instance, Manchester, so we have, we have the ball field. People from both towns are always there.
Yeah.
Our police understand if there's a, if there's a ballgame, they're not gonna go look, because they know that could be from the event. We had trouble for a while with Mascanomo. During a ballgame, they would tag Essex, or cars without Manchester stickers. Yeah, there you go. And for a long time, we've been asking them, look, can't you exercise your discretion? The answer is, can you? Yes. Will they? I don't know. But at Essex, we do.
Yeah. Okay. I think that's enough. Do you think that's enough?
I'm fine with it, yeah.
All right, so all those things I discussed, are those fine with the board? We'll write them up in a minute, all the things we covered.
I think, yes, I'm in agreement that they're fine. Everybody else?
Yeah.
All right, so do you want to just make a motion to revise the regulations in accordance with the discussion?
Make a motion to adjust the Centennial Grove regulations, based on the discussion we had this evening. And motion for the board to vote to approve.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. Okay, we have this electronic donation portal. So the board had a question as to whether, in areas around town, public spaces, parks, et cetera, could there be a sign with a QR code that says, hey, you know, donate to the town of Essex, or even other causes? And I found out that it is definitely possible to have a digital donation portal. It does not cost the town anything to have it set up and run. It will cost the user whatever the fee is that City Hall Systems tax on for processing the transaction. So I guess to get clear on this, were you looking, Alva, you were talking about a sign that would provide a donation back to the town, or these other entities?
So I was thinking more the town. And my feeling is, is that we've got, you know, Memorial Park, we've got Centennial Grove, we've got Canomo Point that guests come to, and my thoughts are, if, you know, somebody was there and enjoying it, that they'd want to donate, one, to help our parks, or the fire department, that, you know, I think the other part is, is that if, in the past, when somebody asked for approval to use the parking at, for a special party, and we gave them permission and then asked them, you know, we asked them if they would consider giving us a donation. And this is some way to, one, be able to have somebody give them a link to say, here's where you go. The other thing would be at the parks where people are enjoying.
Yep.
Using it, yeah.
But I was looking at this thinking, okay, this seems a lot, and things like...
Well, you could list all these things. When they get to the site, they could have a pulldown. Now, obviously, some of these, this was when we were looking at the marijuana operation, and they were thinking about donating money to causes in town. If it was going to be for the town, some of these things would not.
Correct.
Like, you know, the youth soccer, the Little League, the Lions Club, those are not town organizations.
Well, and I even, I mean, not to take anything away from, you know, I'm not sure what the fire department versus the fire company is.
That's not a town organization either. It's a, it's an organization that comes alongside, like Friends of the Library, Friends of the Council on Aging.
Right, and then those are the things, I just felt like they have their own fundraising processes in doing those.
I don't think you want a sign on town property that allows you to give money to some organization that's not part of the town.
I want the ones that we actually have to approve, as a Board of Selectmen.
Right, so...
I think we need to have very specific ones.
Right, so we started with this list. My question is, and maybe you don't have the answer tonight, if you go through this list, you cross out stuff that is not town, not a town department, is everything else fine, or do you want some time to go over this and maybe put other options down? Because we could move ahead and get this thing set up, we can get some signs.
More, yeah, later.
You can, because we can always change the portal and the dropdown on the portal.
Yeah, I'd say get going and just take out all the ones that are not in town.
Yeah, I'd like, if those, if the two of you can put comments into BZ about this, I will come sit with you, and then we can discuss.
Yeah.
Some of the addition, because, you know, some of the things, I, you know, I do feel like the Friends of really aren't town.
They're not.
So you want to target, like, five or six?
No, I mean, because, so I do believe, like, the fire department.
Yeah.
I do believe the police. Even the, you know, the Essex Library, the Council on Aging, I'm not so sure, but, well, I guess the Department of Public Works. But you know what, I'd like it to be...
The dirt pile fund?
Yeah, you think you'll get much?
[laughing].
Save the dirt piles.
You're gonna get a lot of those, right? I'm here to give money to the dirt pile.
Because the only other thing that I was thinking is, if the page could be town dropdown, and Friends dropdown, you know, and like, something...
No, because I don't think you want on town property...
Right.
Because then you're favoring someone.
Correct.
And then you got a problem.
You could link out to the, you could provide links out if you wanted...
Well, they have their own pages a lot of times, so they already have a link.
We have community links on our website, and anyone who has a community organization can be on it.
But like the Pocket Parks, and, you know, things like that.
Yeah, for me, I was thinking consolidating it as far as the Grove and the Pocket Parks, like...
Well, it's up to, it's really up to you. I just need to know what the final list is. You can probably decide tonight. Just tell me which ones to check off.
Affordable Housing Trust, do we, is this something that...
Check.
Yes.
Check. Fire Department, check.
But is the fire department or the fire company?
The department.
Because you asked that question the other night.
Has to be the department. The company is a private organization.
Okay, so take the fire company off.
Okay, so the police department, cross out association.
Okay.
Library.
Library.
Or the library. So the Friends of is no?
No, can't do it.
Council on Aging.
Not the Friends.
Public Works, Dirt Pile.
DVW. Now, Board of Health, you can decide whether...
Do you really think people are gonna donate to the Public Works, truly?
Put it in there, somebody might.
Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Board of Health.
Yeah. E S.
The school itself, but you can't do the PTO, I think that's private.
But even if you did to the...
Where would the money go to the, to the school?
You can't really do that, because you, right, you have, I would say, take it off.
I say, take the school off.
Yep, so then you go to...
Shipbuilders Museum off.
Yeah.
Downtown Lighting Project. Yeah, okay.
That's off.
I was wondering about that. So Centennial Grove improvement is truly a thing, so yes?
Do we say that? That's why I'm saying, do we combine it with all parks?
Or just Centennial Grove? No, because some people might want to donate to a particular park.
But we have so many Pocket Parks that also need help and love.
Well, Pocket Parks are maybe different.
Well, how about if you did general tennis? Then you could use it wherever you, instead of the site park. I, I don't know.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, I was kind of thinking parks...
Parks and Rec kind of thing.
Then they think we have that.
And maybe, maybe a dropdown to allow you to direct it to a particular one?
Or put, have a comment box.
Yeah.
Oh, Christ, that's gonna be hard to track.
That...
Did everybody say no to that?
The people that are writing this are gonna not be able to do that.
Okay, so so far, I'm keeping the Centennial Grove project, just for now. Okay, the fire department, see what I mean, there's so many parks.
I know, but that, that's great for now. I don't know if we need to, do we have to do anything about that now?
No.
EDC, do we want anything to go to EDC?
Well, they don't have a budget, per se, so I would say no.
No. Sorry, EDC.
Take the Little League off of there, don't you think? That's...
They're out of town.
Lions.
Town Celebration Fund?
Yeah.
And River Day, it's kind of a quasi, I mean, it's all volunteers from the town, the town...
Town, but also Chamber? I mean, because the last couple of times that the Chamber has...
You didn't even let them use the brand.
That was the rolling thing.
Oh, was that the rolling, oh, right, yeah.
And River Day, right now, uses some of the town's special events funding, so I would say that would be a good...
Yeah, why not?
So, so you're gonna just stay with Centennial Grove, and then jump down to Celebration Fund and River Day, right?
Sounds, sounds good.
So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Look at that.
Nice, half of them gone.
And I think that that makes it a little cleaner, or a lot cleaner.
And we might add some, if we hear from people who...
So I'll go ahead and I'll set up the...
Board of Selectmen.
I'll get the portal set up, and we'll...
It's on there.
We'll come up with a draft of a sign, so that you can see that.
That'd be great.
And maybe it could be put on the police message board every once in a while, when there's something that's going on.
While you're driving.
Moved around town.
Do a screenshot.
Yeah. Well, just awareness.
Is that it? Are we done?
We have one more. Is it Grove Cottage Improvements?
Yeah, and so I'm just giving an update on the improvements. Something you'll see in my next report is, we were just told this week that Scott Energy is going to be able to put in the HVAC units that we are seeking. They were gonna do the labor part of that, but in speaking with Adam Scott this morning, it appears that they might even be able to donate a fair, a fair amount of the actual materials.
Nice.
Let's see.
And this is so that we could have AC?
And heat. So during the show, during events only. So, you know, if you get there, you gotta turn the heater on. If it's October and you want heat for your event, turn it on a half hour early, and then make sure that it's shut off, and that's where we might have to get into having someone check all that. And then, in the middle of the summer, and this relates back to the other question I have, is, do you want to have an indoor entertainment license for the cottage with appropriate controls and constraints? Because that would allow people in a climate-controlled space, so the windows don't have to be opened, to have entertainment at any season of the year.
I think that that's, would be great. And to have it, so that you don't have to have them coming in every time. It's assumed if they, if they want entertainment, they bring it, whether it's a one-man guitar or a radio.
So what I'll do is, for the next meeting, I'll put together kind of what that would look like, and have a space for you to come up with the constraints. And it will say things like, all windows and doors need to remain closed. You know, the maximum amount of time you can have the indoor entertainment is this amount of time. You can't go past that, you know? We'll set things up, and then, once that gets put in place, it can just be renewed every year, and the people renting the facility will have to abide by whatever constraints are on the permit. So I'll set that up the next time. And I think that is it.
OSRD on Wednesday, right?
Oh, so, I'm sorry.
That's correct.
I gotta, there was a couple of things I wanted to add to that. All right, so as far as reminders, so the planning board is Wednesday at 7:15, May 21st, on the third floor here. This is regarding the proposed open space residential development. And then, our next regular meeting is June 9th at 6:00 PM here. But I did want to mention, or remind, May 26th, Memorial Day, here at Memorial Park, that they've done, you know, they do every year. But this year, it's actually kind of a little later, it's at 11:00 AM. I don't think there's anything else.
Public comment is the only other thing.
Please, thank you. And also remember, six inches from the mic.
I'm gonna make a quick public comment on public comment. Can I make a request that in future agendas, we move public comment to the beginnings of the meetings, as it is in a number of other boards? I think having it at the end means that you guys deliberate and vote on things, without ever getting the public input on that thing. Thank you.
Don't like, Mark Lynch, 16 R County Road. I would add to that, I would do public comment at the beginning and the end. I know that can get time-consuming, but if possible, I think that's what works best. My public comment tonight, I know it's a little bit sensitive, but the vote on the Harbor Master change, I don't know if the board noticed, but the Harbor Master, the current Harbor Master did come in just about when the vote was being taken. It seemed like that item had been moved up on the agenda, and I know that happens, but my sense was he wasn't aware of that, and probably would have liked to have had the opportunity to speak to that. I know there has been discussion in the past, but where the formal vote was being taken tonight, I know he probably would have, I don't mean to speak for him, but I think he would have liked to have been given the chance to speak to that. And now, since the decision's been made, if you don't mind me making a suggestion, and again, the sensitivity here, you don't have to respond, but I would recommend, since it's a Personnel Board that made the decision, one of the board, one of the Board of Selectmen, reach out to the Harbor Master and review this with him, maybe even involve Chief Shamshak